Going to go ahead and start today's regular council meeting, the Jackson City Council. Today is January 3rd, and it's a little after 10:00. Let me first say Happy New Year to everybody that's here. And want to just acknowledge another one of the hardest working departments in this city. Often times, we don't see their work because they're out and about. But if we would, just give a round of hand to the Department of Parks and Recreation. Hope everybody had a good, happy holiday. Happy Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and all of that. At this point, we'll start with our invocation by Dr. Matt Friedman, President of West Biblical Seminary. After which, I will ask if Councilman Foote will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will we all please stand? Thank you.
Every morning, I get up and I pray for our mayor. This morning, I prayed the second beatitude over his life. Blessed are those who mourn. That God would break his heart over the things that break the heart of God. And Ashby, because you're my city councilman, I prayed the same prayer over you. God bless Ashby Foote, and may your heart be broken over the things that break the heart of God. And I pray for that for all of us. I was also in the third proverb this morning. I'd just like to share a prayer from Proverbs 3. I believe the Lord says to us today, "My children, do not forget my teaching, but let your heart keep my commandments. For the length of days and years of your life, in peace they will add to you. Let not steadfast love and faithfulness forsake you. Bind them around your neck; write them on the tablet of your heart, so that you will find favor and good success in the sight of God and man, not only for yourselves, but for the city of Jackson, Mississippi." Lord, I'm going to ask you to help these council persons trust in you with all their heart, and lean not on their own understanding. In all their ways, may they acknowledge you, and may you make their path straight this year. May they not be wise in their own eyes, but may they fear you and turn away from evil, and it will be healing to their flesh and refreshment to their bones, but not just theirs, but for this city, this great city. Because Jesus, our best days are yet to come. Lord, we love you. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen.
Dr. Friedman, thank you for that wonderful prayer. And just want to let you know that it is imprinted upon our hearts. Thank you so much for that. At this time, colleagues, we will go to public comments. We do have five public comments. All of them are on a pending item, which is the curfew. And so, we will start. Let me just state the rules, our point of order. It is three minutes. You have three minutes to discuss your item. The clerk to my left, Clerk Sabrina, will raise a 30-second, or yellow time card to let you know. Do we have the red one? We don't have the red one. After 30 seconds, you're going to see the other side of the card, or some type of signal to let you know that your timer is up. And we ask that you will please respect that, so that we can have our meeting in an orderly fashion. At first, we'll have Brother Kareem. Help him right here. Right there. Thank you. Hit the green button for him. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, city councilmen. Again, to everyone, have a blessed New Year for sure. Many of you know that I'm blind, so if you pull that card up, I'm not going to be able to see it. But I'm still going to be in three minutes. But I got advantage on you. But I'm going to respect the city council.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We're just here today, I'm part of the local organizing committee, and we're here today to speak about the concerns about the uprising, street violence in the community. We know that since the pandemic, that there has been an increase in violence throughout the community. And the local organizing committee, working with the south and southwest regions, Little Rock, Arkansas, and other cities, we began to realize that this is not just something that's going on in Jackson, but throughout the areas, or throughout our community as well. We also recognize and understand that there's three major factors that's involving in this, and we identify those as education, economics, and culture. Historically, we have recognized and understand that we know increasing police, projects that deal with control and containment is not the solution for our community. So today, the local organizing committee comes here not to grieve and to gripe, but to help come with a solution to 2024. The local organizing committee was blessed in 2023. The Congressman Benny Thompson, on the Congress floor on June 7th, came together and asked the Congress to come together, as he recognized the work of the local organizing committee, and what we were doing throughout the state in regards to addressing issues in the community. So today, we come with our program, it's called the SOS, Solving Our Own Selves, saving our own, solving our own situation, and saving our own selves. Because we know there is a SOS in the community. And so, we come today to speak to the communities and ask the communities to identify, or to possibly acknowledge the programs that we are trying to present in the community. We just finished up in 2023 with one of our major projects that we work on, which is going into community and bringing in the community and training individuals in disaster awareness. When we looked at what happened in Roland Fort, we realized that one of the major factors was our people were not prepared for a disaster like that. But we also recognize that there are going to be many coming after that. But the local organizing committee had a team that we had trained and was ready to go in and help the community. So these are some of the projects that we are offering to the community, and to the recreation department, and to the city council to support our programs, and possibly, we can be able to sit down together and talk about a solution regarding our problem in the community. Thank you.
Next, we'll have David from the local organizing community.
Greetings. I have not been here in a while, and it's good to see a lot of pretty faces. I'll speak briefly. Brother Kareem covered so much. Yesterday, I had a chance to stand with Kenny Stokes, and over the weekend, the same. About a bridge, where a car went and got lodged under the bridge, and then I saw that the bridge still hadn't been fixed. Then I came to learn, by way of the Chief of Police, at that same gathering, that there were young people being killed to the tune of 109 murders in this very small city. I'm in Los Angeles, and that's a lot of murders in such a small city. We had a program in Los Angeles called Weed and Seed some time ago. I don't know if you remember Weed and Seed. Weed and Seed had the idea that if you, you could not build in an area that had weeds, the weeds would choke out any growth that could be positive. So therefore, you needed to de-weed the area in order to reseed. Well, they didn't do much seeding, but they did a whole lot of weeding. And the problem was not seen that the community had problems, but that the people in the community were the problem. So therefore, if you remove the people, then you solve the problem. Did the problems go away? Did the problems go away? Did the problems go away? That motto was reiterated throughout the United States. Why am I saying this? I spoke with Kenny Stokes yesterday, and he showed me the program relative to a curfew. I said at that time, I'm not in favor of a blanket curfew, because I've seen how it's been abused. And about the grassroots organization like Tim White has back there. They took out the grassroots like the Reset organization. They took out the grassroots like the early social workers before they, you know, had to do all the paperwork. They took out the grassroots people and then reinserted folks that knew how to fill out paperwork, but were disconnected from the community. And so, it was all weeding and not much seeding. The people they took out cared, the people they put in were in it for the profit. I'm in favor of a temporary curfew, because the people in the community have expressed a need for it, as long as it's done correctly. With organizations like the LOC, bringing national models into play, and organizations on the ground with people who actually care and are invested in the community, being part of the edification process, instead of the old method of weed and seed, where you just bring people in that don't care, to take the people out as though they are the problem. The people have problems, they are not the problem. I want to thank Kenny Stokes for teaming up with people and having an open ear to bring this to attention. Thank you for all councilmen and all listeners.
Thanks, David. Next, we'll have Andrew, also from the local organizing community.
Mr. Campbell has not stepped in yet, and when he does, I'll wave my hand so you can see him.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. And would someone from the organization please make sure that the clerk gets your information, so that we can reach out? I think it'd be beneficial that we have a committee meeting with Public Safety, so that we can hear those presentations and options, so that we can be aware and find out the best way forward. All right? Thank you all so much for being here. All right. Next, we have Mr. Lee Bernard. Good morning. Press, press the
Good morning to the city council, to the citizens of Jackson. I stand in favor of having a curfew here in Jackson. Mainly, we need to work with our young people to keep them off the street at night. Sometimes, that might even start with the parents. Because since the parents are, should be in control of their children, they should help them at home at night, preparing to go to school the next day. Because we can sit around and try to keep them off the street, but it's going to take the parents, it's going to take the churches. So therefore, I'm in favor of a curfew, as long as we, in that equation, we put the parents somewhere in there, also put the churches in there also. But thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Next, we have Reset Jackson. Yeah, you're fine.
My name is Byron Brumfield, and I'm the president of Reset Jackson.
James Hopkins, the founder of Reset Jackson. We're here today because we're in favor of the curfew. I think it's important to put accountability on the parents of these youngsters who are out there committing crimes late night. And that curfew is a proper way of doing it. If you're held accountable, if there are penalties for allowing your child to do whatever they want to do, then you're more likely to tighten up the grip on them. One of the concerns I had was, I went to a Precinct 1 meeting about a month ago, and the question was brought up, what do you do when you pass by a young person at 2:00 in the morning? The reply was, "We do nothing, because if we stop, they're just going to take off running." Well, to me, that's a problem. If you stop, if you shine that light, if you turn those blues on enough, you can stop them from seven days out to maybe three days out. And that's four days, we don't have to worry about that person committing a crime. We know we can't stop it, we can slow it down. But if we do nothing, it's going to fester, it's going to grow, it's going to increase. Now, personally, I don't know why anyone would want to vote against a curfew. I don't think it's a big money item for the city, but it's going to hold more people accountable, including our police department. The police department does a great job. Under Chief Wade's leadership, we've been seeing some great things. But it doesn't stop with them. We have to hold judges accountable. You can't commit, you can't shoot somebody in Madison and not get an assault charge plus an attempted murder charge. You shoot somebody in Jackson, you're going to get that assault charge. But we have to up the annies to make people stop. If I can keep sticking my hand in an ant bed and never get bitten, guess what? I'm going to walk around just digging in ant beds. We have to let the people know, the young people know, the parents know, our leaders know, our churches know, our organizations know, that we are serious about fixing this city. We are not beyond repair. It just takes people like you all, you all, even our state government, to step up and believe in Jackson, like we believe in Jackson. And I want to thank you for your time, and again, we're in favor of the curfew. Reset Jackson, one city, one community.
Thank you. Thank you. Andrew, how you doing, man?
I'm doing great, Doc. Hey, good morning, everyone. I'm going to be very, very short. I came in yesterday, we was talking to the press conference, and I said what I needed to say. I just want to reiterate some very important points from a social work standpoint. I am a social worker, been a social worker for a long time, and I'm coming from a mental health standpoint. And I'm all for the curfew. We have to have something in place. And once we have something in place, then we can have some ways to be able to have some, what we call, solution focus, solution therapy, solution focus. If you don't have any solutions, guess what? You have chaos. And it's three things that change people's lives. Three things, only three things. The people you meet, the places you go, and the books you read. Our children are not doing it. They're not going to the right places, they're not reading the right people. And at 2:00 in the morning, they're not going to meet the right people. So I think it needs to be an actual, the vote needs to be something that's fair, but whatever option, we have to have something in place. The best way to have something in place, it has to come from a social service engagement process, when we, the community, are the state, are the change agents. We can't change anything if you don't have the community's voice and the community's choice. So that's why we think the curfew would be great, because it'd give us an opportunity to get these children in what we call a safe haven, and then we can start working on the mind, body, and soul. Thank you for giving me some time. My name is Mr. Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you. Since we've, all those public comments dealt with the curfew, let's go ahead and take that item, that
Just once you put it on the floor. I got you.
Let's get it on the floor. Item number six.
Ordinance of the City of Jackson, Mississippi, reenacting Jackson, Mississippi Code of Ordinance, Article 2, Section 86 through 51 through 86 through 62.
It's been moving properly second on this item. Let the record reflect that we do have a full quorum of seven. We have six on the dais, and I believe we're being joined by Councilwoman Lee, virtually. Mayor, do you have to come in?
Yes. First and foremost, good morning and Happy New Year to everyone. Happy to see everyone has had a safe and successful holiday season. Forgive me, as you can hear, I'm a little bit hoarse, trying to struggle through it, but I'll be all right. I think, first and foremost, any ideas that look to curtail negative interactions of young people, I think is worth, is a worthy, it is worthy of discussion. There are a few things that I think we should be aware of when we talk about curfews, right? First and foremost, we don't want just a perfunctory exercise, meaning just doing things just to say we did it, right? And so, anything we enact, we have to know and believe that it will not only be effective, but know that we have the tools in place for it to actually be sufficient. What we've experienced in the past, when we've enacted curfews, is a police department that interacts with young people, you know, detains them, often tries to take them to a detention center, which does not have the capacity to hold them, right? They're returned to the same homes that they walked out of in the first place. But that doesn't mean that a curfew in and of itself is necessarily a negative idea. I want to encourage that if we do this, that we put the tools in place that make something effective. What I've researched, so the council knows what I've researched, is what Baltimore, Maryland has done, where they have curfew centers. And what the curfew centers are, are not a jail, it is not a detention center, it is not a place that only prepares our children for a criminal justice system. It is a center that has social work professionals there, that have people that, when they are taken to those centers, we can deal with the underlying challenges that led them on the street in the first place. And so, that's the type of place we need to be taking our kids to. Now, if they've created, if they've done an actual criminal act, then there are laws and there are things in place that deal with those criminal acts. But young people who may be leaving for all kinds of reasons out of their home, really need the appropriate services to address that. My wife and I say every day, "Everyone you meet is dealing with a battle you know nothing about, so be kind always." And that's no different for our children. Our children are often dealing with a lack of food in their homes, a lack of protection. The home itself may be the violent place, right, for some of them. And so, we need those centers in place. And I think that as a body, we should talk about how we fund those. Since we've shuttered our early childhood development centers, maybe we look at those as a space that we can have those type of services. You know that we've gotten seed money for our Violence Interruption Program. We want to have social work professionals there. We have Keisha Coleman, who is now our Executive Director. This is an opportunity that we can work hand in hand with the ideas that you're generating, the resources that we've pulled together, to make something that is truly effective, and not just say that we did something, but say that we know that we did something. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the council?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. Mr. President, I want to thank everyone for caring about our babies. The young man Reset Jackson, his son, was the young man killed on the fairgrounds at the Mugbug Festival. He's concerned about other children. One young man spoke about his classmates, and a young girl, 15, have a baby. By the time she get thirty, the child is 15. They don't know how to raise a child. Too many of these children on the streets, doing what they think right, and it's wrong. Grown folks using them, peddling dope. You have to be in these innocent neighborhoods to see the misery. Then this young mama don't know how to raise a child, and when that child go to the penitentiary, especially if it's a boy, it come back a girl. Now, how do you deal with that in these poor neighborhoods? Every suggestion that the mayor is making, I hope he'll implement them. Because once the council approved this, it's in the mayor's hands. He can do all those things he's saying, and we hope he will. Well, I don't see the council not voting to give them money. We give them the budget every time. I think everyone sees, that's what people are saying. They want to have social work. We had social workers involved. The only reason it stopped, another jurisdiction had a lawsuit, not Jackson, Mississippi. And the federal court said it must be revisited every year. And that's what somebody said, "We want to see it every year. This will be revisited every year." The Chief of Police said something profoundly at the march. He want to cut murders by half. They said 109 last year, dead people. What's wrong with taking it down to 55? Let's get these kids out the equation. Let's stop these kids from becoming killers or being killed. They make bad decisions, because number one, they're young. You give them a ticket to a rap concert, or give them four years at Harvard, which one you think they're going to choose? They're young. We all been young. Somebody saved us. I told them yesterday, I used to carry two guns. Don't think somebody didn't save me. Let's save these children. That's what it's all about. Saving these children like somebody saved us. Think back. All of us have done something wrong. We just didn't get caught. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes. Councilman Harley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And thanks for everyone that came up and made comments during, on this issue. Just one thing I'd like to say is, we have to get a holistic approach to this. It's not just a JPD problem. It's not a city council problem. It's not a mayor's problem. It's not a church problem. It's all of us' problem. This thing, if we are to, in fact, cut that murder rate in half, we each have to adopt a portion of solving this as a problem. And that's everyone. Homemakers, the people that stay at home every day, the people that work for the city, the people that don't work for the city, the people that live in the neighborhoods, the churches, the nonprofits. Everyone has to take ownership, and that's the only way we can look at decreasing this. This is a village problem. And these other groups are just parts of the village. They can't handle it by themselves. We have to have a different attitude. And I certainly appreciate Councilman Stokes for putting this thing into perspective. And also, I'd like to say this, we have to create an environment that doesn't generate murderers. We have to create an environment that provides hope. Because they don't have any hope. Because there is no options. Because it's just the urgency of the moment and the frustration, and then folks make the wrong decisions. We got to turn that around, you know? Everyone has something that they can do. Let's all do it. Even if it's just going across the street and cleaning up an abandoned property, so that people will have some hope along that street, even if it's just picking up litter. You can fight crime. I've been fighting crime for years, not with a gun. Gun was just for self-defense. But with a weed eater, with a tractor, with a chainsaw. Because if we eliminate the place that crime exists, we can give people another focus, another peace of mind, that they can think about, hey, man, there may be a future, there may be hope. But if we continue to live, and let folks live like they're in despair, and they're going to see that there is no option. So I look forward to this year. I look forward to keeping on the agenda, this thing of cleanliness of our city, this thing of crime, and voting for all those issues that's going to help our kids successfully look out the school bus and think, hey, things are going to be all right. Look out the school bus window and say, hey, look at this neighborhood. People in my community believes in me, therefore, I'm going to go to school, and I'm going to do the best I can, and I'm going to make something of myself. And I'll finish on that note, but again, holistic approach. It's everybody's problem, everyone in this room. So we ask ourselves going forward, what little thing can I do? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Councilman Foote?
Thank you, Mr. Banks, and thank you, Councilman Stokes, for putting this on the agenda. I'd like to turn to page six, the last page of it, and the Section 86-60. I think it needs to be amended. It says expiration, sunset provision. This article shall expire and shall be null and void on July 1, 2009. I don't think that's supposed to be there. But I know, it's what it needs to be amended to reflect a date into the future, whatever date you, Councilman Stokes, want to put in there.
Is, let me ask a question. Is this ordinance by legal meant to be temporary, or could this be ongoing? Tell me, what is the scope of your desire from this council?
Tell me what is the scope of your desire from this council, Mr. Stokes?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you. Um, by state, I'm sorry, by federal law, legal guidelines, and I hope you had a chance to look, uh, they must expire after one year. And that's what these citizens have said. Let's make sure that it's not something that'll be ongoing after a year. We had to bring it back and be revoted on. Our school system in our county should walk lockstep. I think this is, that this is the perfect opportunity, being that we have vacant spaces with our public school buildings that could be used as those spaces that the mayor articulated about. Uh, and I think that if Jackson Public Schools embraces this idea, then, you know, I know that there's an amendment that's in that state statute that says that they must first try to allow it to be a charter school. But I think that if we can be implemented with a JPS program, uh, and there being partnerships to, uh, prevent this, that it can happen. And so, uh, I, I will put the challenge on JPS, uh, to come to the table with the mayor. Let's talk about some solutions on how we can get this.
What we're talking about with the DOJ money. We all know that in prior years, uh, there's been a submission for DOJ grants that we had to, we had to relinquish because it would have been considered supplanting. Because we're near, uh, or we, we're edging towards the point of being fully staffed for the, the positions allotted for JP D. It will not be considered supplanting. But also there's an opportunity that we can use those funds in the way that we previously intended to use them.
Alright. Thank you, Mayor. If, uh, Mr. Melabek, if you can research with your division under Department of Justice, it's OJJD, Office of Justice Juvenile Detention Prevention. There's several funding mechanisms. Office of Justice Juvenile Detention Prevention, under, that's a division under DOJ. Alright? Any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Item carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Stokes, and thank you, community. This is a win for us, but the work just begins. Yeah. Uh, let's go ahead and let's go to item number nine.
Order confirming the mayor's appointment of Abram Mohammed as Director of Department of Parks and Recreation, City of Jackson, Mississippi.
So moved. Second.
It's, it's been moved and properly second on this item. Uh, we will yield to the mayor for introduction. Uh, normally, uh, we have two rounds of discussion, colleagues. I don't, unless there's objection, I don't see the need to go two rounds, but I, we will allow space for any comments, but, uh, the necessary requirement of going two rounds of discussion, I don't think is necessary since we're all familiar, uh, with, uh, Brother Mohammed. Mayor, I'll give it to you at this time.
Yes, uh, as was previously stated, uh, I don't know how much Brother Abram needs introduction. Uh, but for those that, uh, are not aware, uh, just our personal relationship, uh, I've known Brother Abram Mohammed, uh, for over a decade, uh, even prior to meeting our, our prior, uh, Parks and Rec Director, uh, Brother Eisen Harris or Mr. Eisen Harris. Uh, I've been a part of a number of community, uh, works with Brother Mohammed and so I know, uh, where his heart is. I know where his passion lies. Uh, he's community oriented, um, and he has fashioned himself in a way to prepare him to take this position. Uh, I think he's, you're on your second doctorate? Oh, uh, second doctorate? Uh, as of November, he says. Um, and, um, I think that, that he also has the spirit of, of the workforce within Parks and Rec behind him. And so it is my pleasure, uh, to present someone who has committed themselves to this, uh, this effort of working, uh, to not only make facilities sufficient, but to have programming, uh, which truly, uh, speaks to and, and, um, engages young people. Since we're having a conversation about young people in large part this morning, uh, we need sufficient programming that engages them. Every block will be organized by somebody. It'll either be organized by a positive force or a negative force. Uh, and I believe he understands that and is with great pleasure, I present him for, um, appointment as the Parks and Recreation Director.
Dr. Mohammed?
Well, first giving honor to God. Thanking him for the gift of life and for blessings and for finding favor for a wretch like myself. I want to thank my mayor, the administration, for your vote of confidence, for your guidance, for your due diligence, and for your vision. And I promise to do my best not to betray that. For it was your father who taught us all that if you don't love the people, you will eventually betray them. I want to thank this council for allowing me to even being presented to you and to come before you for consideration. To take upon a job that I don't take lightly because it deals with the stewardship and shepherdship of not just playgrounds and basketball goals, but of people's lives. I want to thank my Parks and Rec family, who I truly did not expect to turn out like this and I'm honored and I'm thankful that you will be here and such. I want to thank my spiritual family, who are here, who have labored with me as we tried to do community work. I want to thank the many directors that are viewing via social media. Want to thank my Jackson State family, my Heinz Community College family, my St. Leo family. I want to thank my first boss, when I came to the city of Jackson, one of the strongest directors I ever met in my life, Mr. Alan Jones, for allowing me to come in as a rec aide. Started out at the very entry level. I mean, I didn't just walk in the door, I came from the bottom up. And I want to thank you, Mr. Jones, for pouring into me everything that you did. And I want to thank the man who was responsible for deputizing me as his deputy and that's Mr. Eisen Harris. I thank you for your presence being here today and all that you guided me and shown me and your love and your friendship. And I want to thank looking social media as well, Mr. Steve Hutton, for his short time, that he was in the seat for. I learned a great many things from him as well, and this is the truth. And I really want to thank the many men and women of Parks and Recreation for your love and your support and your unwavering commitment to giving the best quality of service to the citizens of Jackson. And definitely, not least, I want to thank my family.
Alright.
I want to thank my daughters who are here, my two sons that I've ganged over the past month and a half. Both of them got married within two weeks apart. I thank you, sons, for I felt relief in my pocket already. And I want to thank the rock in my home. I want to thank you, Tracy. I thank you for always being a woman of God and a woman of patience.
Alright.
And I thank you for being what the scripture says, help meet. To help me meet my obligation to God first and to everyone else thereafter.
Praise.
I don't know what I did to deserve you, but I want to say publicly and before the whole world, I'm thankful.
Wow. There you go. There you go.
Rap on, brother.
Okay. And I definitely want to thank my fraternity brothers, who have been very encouraging throughout this whole time. I want to thank you for keeping me in remembrance of our cardinal principles, manhood, scholarship, perseverance and uplift. The cardinal principle that, uh, undergird Omega Sapphira Fraternity Incorporated. And I'm just thankful for everybody, period. Psalms one hundred says, enter with the password, "Thank you." And I want to enter with the password of thanking you all. And if I omitted anyone, please, please charge it to my head and not my heart, for it is not my intention. I don't have a long drawn out speech. I won't just spend most of my time saying thank you. But what I will say to the council is this. All my life has been dedicated to service. I grew up in a home where I had a father that taught me a very cardinal principle at an early age. We were running a race on the track team, my good friends, Sean Culliver, Walter Davis, and Emmett Smith. And at the end of that race, we finished second. And I ran to my father and I said, pops, did you, did you see us, man? We, we finished. He said, boy, do you, what are you excited about? And I said, we, we getting the silver medal. We, we finished. We came in second against the defending state champs. He said, son, you know what second mean? I said, yeah, we getting the silver medal. He said, son, second mean you the first to lose. I have never, ever forgotten that. Because it gave me guiding principles to always strive to be the best at whatever I do. And if it's not first, it's last. They say there's a lesson in loss. The only thing I've learned about losing is that I don't like it.
Come on, coach.
And so therefore, my service in United States Marine Corps, my service as a law enforcement officer, my service in the ministry, and my service to the city has always been in service. And what I can assure you, council, citizens, all who are watching, that every time my feet are blessed to hit the floor, it will hit the floor with service in mind. Because I understand that the mission is greater than myself. I have been centered into things all my life where the mission has been greater than me. I will always be honest and everybody know my motto, I'm gonna always be six and twelve, straight up and down. What you see is what you get. I'm not gonna lie to you. I'm not gonna give you no sports screen because I don't have time to try to remember what number I told you last week when you asked me again about it next month. If I be truthful, be honest, and lay out a strategic plan for whatever we do, I can always stand on it. I would not bring embarrassment upon myself, my family, this administration, or this city. I serve a higher calling. I represent a higher individual. I represent a higher cause that will not allow me to undermine the principles in which I'm standing here on or sitting here on. So with that being said, I welcome any challenges, any uphill roads that may be brought to me. For part of a previous storm, part of a favorite poem that I re, um, love, the middle stands of, it says, "Dark may be the clouds about you, and your future may seem grim. But don't let your nerve desert you. Keep yourself in fighting trim. If the worst is bound to happen, in spite of all that you can do, running from it will not save you. See it through." And I promise you, I will always, always, always see it through. And now I lay myself at your hands. You, you made that sound like, uh, your life was on the line.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Mohammed. Thanks for being here today and your willingness to serve in this position.
Thank you, Councilman, for your willingness.
Reading from your resume here, or the page, the, the, um, information given, this sentence struck, uh, stood out to me, says, "Experienced in building and leading high-performance teams to achieve organizational goals by way of collaboration and team building with internal and external stakeholders." That's a great statement. I think that's a great, you know, beginning point. And I think sta- external stakeholders are critical to us, really realize optimizing, uh, the value of our, um, public parks for the citizens. Can you tell, offer me some thoughts on what you, your plan is to embrace and extend, uh, out to external stakeholders?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that question, Councilman Foot, and thank you for your willingness to serve the constituents in Ward One. I can give you, uh, one, um, very easily right off the bat because it's one that I'm working on now. We know that we have faced challenges where our city pools are concerned. And those challenges are, Councilman Foot, that they are, uh, dated and they are in much need of repair, um, physically, financially, just everything that ends in Lee, it needs it. Nevertheless, we know that the budget may not necessarily be there to fully address those issues. So we have already started. People, houses of worship, philanthropists, that have already stated that they are willing to come and lend their time, their resources by way of, um, human resources and financial resources to help us meet those obligations that we may be able to have more city pools open this year. Now that is just a small example of reaching out. Now, that is just a small example of reaching out already within this month to get them aboard. But I don't want to give you, make you, uh, be under any disillusion. The challenges that face with that are really dealing with lifeguards. Um, I just left the conference in October in Dallas, where part of the conference dealt solely with the shortage of lifeguards nationally. It is not just a Jackson thing. It's not just a Mississippi thing. It's something that is happening nationally. And so from there, some tools was gained how we can go and make a better partnership with our high school students, as well as some of our college students to help bridge that gap by, uh, way of offering incentives. And we can go through those incentives at some other time. But that's another example of extern, uh, external factors of reaching out to the local high schools and the local colleges and offering incentives by way of paying for their training, um, providing that they are willing to sign to give us at least two years' worth of service, so on and so forth, just adapting some of the same core values that's taken from the military along what we learned. So I hope that answered your question as to some external factors.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions to comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes. Hold on, brother Mohammed. You got almost your whole department here. I know they need to get back to work.
Oh, yes, sir.
And I, I know that you got two things that's working, you know, at you right now, the doctor and the minister. So I'mma, I'mma ask if either, uh, uh, the mayor will pull your coat tail?
Yes, sir.
Or you just kind of, just kind of keep it a little brief. Thank you.
I got you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I got you. Just when I need a long answer. Yes, sir. Mary Jones.
Wait, hold on. If you, if you gonna ask for a long answer, you need to meet.
I got to go. Uh, Mary Jones and, um, Meg Everstinner. Yes, sir. Um, Mary Jones' situation is, I'd like you to ask about not just allowing young people to play basketball. I would hope we have some kind of supervision because you got great talent with a lot of these young people. But if it's not an adult there, no game's gonna get them. I like the idea we can put our goals back. But Mr. Harris had a great idea. If you put them there and we don't have somebody watching, then we in trouble. Uh, so I talked to you maybe offline to find out, what can we do? Because they're not gonna go up to, to Coach Gordon Park, which is J.C. Park, because that's someone else's territory. Yes, sir. And that's what those parents trying to tell the superintendent. It's a territorial thing with young people. Yes, sir. So could you just think about what we can do with Mary Jones? Good goals out there, where we had good goals. Good young people want to play ball. But we know, as you said, if we don't have someone there to watch them, they're gonna come pick them off. Yes, sir. In terms of Meg Everstinner, before Bobby died, Better Men Society was there. Yes, sir. Bobby died, they're not there, and a fifteen-year-old was killed on Lampton Avenue within a week's time. We need to get Better Men back into Meg Everstinner to work that area. If you've never seen a white pimp, come right there to Lampton. You're gonna see a white pimp, white prostitutes. They stealing the wires where the lights were. We got to have some kind of presence to give these young people a chance to enjoy their community without that negative element taking control of their lives. So, you know, Better Men Society was, they were like in old days how you had, um, the Nation of Islam would make sure that the kids were protected. Yes, sir. We got to make sure these children are protected. So let's look at what we can do with this center and getting Better Men Society back. And I say them because they did a good job. They showed they were, they had books in there. They had learning and everything else. Only thing, some cow would kill Bobby. Yes, sir. But the dream is still alive. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lindsay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And I know we need to keep the agenda moving, but this is important. Um, I care deeply about our parks. You probably picked up on that a little bit. Um, Mr. Jones, it is so good to see you here again today. We sure did get a lot done together, didn't we? But that was when I was an external, as Mr. Foot pointed out, an external organization, not part of the city. But he embraced it and he encouraged and he helped write grants and we were, he helped with fundraising efforts. And we were able to do some very meaningful and important and lasting work in parks in our neighborhoods. And so I would like to encourage you, as you, you are agreeing to an incredibly heavy lift. I mean, this is a big deal. And I know you know that, or you think you know it, but it's really hard, uh, what you're taking on. And, and Mr. Harris can speak to that. But I thank you for being willing to take it on. But I would encourage you to consider hiring someone within your department to help facilitate and organize community efforts within our park system. Um, we have lots of people in our, in our city who want to do something to help with our parks, but sometimes really don't know how to go about improving our parks. Martin Luther King Day is coming up. We'll all have people out picking up trash on Martin Luther King. I'm encouraging people in my ward to spend time improving parks on Martin Luther King Day. They can, you know, repair equipment, paint, plant flowers. There are so many things that are more meaningful to do in our communities than just picking up trash. And so I really think this needs a coordinated effort from you as the new leader of the Parks Department. And I know that it's easier said than done, and I certainly don't mean to overstep, but this isn't going to happen on its own. And I strongly encourage you to take this important step. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may, ma'am, I, I would like to reassure you that although I'm a man who takes pride in what I do, I'm not prideful to the degree that I don't lean on those good practices of the past and conduct research for good practices that others are currently doing. I give you my word, that's what I would do. And everything that's under my charge will be done with the best of effort based on that. I have people who have already reached out to me and said that they are willing to help research and find grants to help with some of the things that we're trying to do. They've already reached out and said it. So it's just great things on the horizon for us to be able to do. I just got to keep pressing forward. And I'm asking that you all continue to make me accountable. And I have no problem with that. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Councilwoman Hartley.
Yes, and also I'll make this brief, uh, just a comment. Dr. Mohammed, I appreciate everything you've been doing for Parks and Recs. And, and the fact I'm looking at your experience, two doctor degrees? That's, that's, that's saying, that's saying a lot. But before you got the doctor degree, I'm looking at your resume and it says that, uh, United States Marine Corps.
Yes, sir.
And what's the motto of the United States Marine Corps?
We have many, but always faithful. Semper Fi.
And what does that mean?
That means always faithful to God, country, corps. And that's the things that undergird everything I do. Semper Fidelis. Always faithful.
And I appreciate that, sir. And the, my challenge to you is, in doing that, through Parks and Recs, help us take care of our village. Help us take care of our city. And it encompasses a lot of what has previously been asked. But using Semper Fi, help us take care of our people through Parks and Recs.
Yes, sir.
And I know you will. And I appreciate you being nominated by the administration. I appreciate your patience, uh, your presence, and I appreciate you accepting this task. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lee?
Thank you. I apologize for not being there today. Um, Mohammed, I just have a couple of questions. One, um, what do you think it looks like for the Tugalu area to have that pool working for this summer? And I know we, um, have some lifeguards that were interested that, um, I would like to make sure that you're aware of. What you?
Okay. Oh, I thought you had a couple of questions. Yes, ma'am. Uh, the Tugalu Pool, um, which is located off Vine Street, um, we don't see any reason why that would not be open, um, fully operational and fully staffed. Uh, it is one of the pools that is one of our most reliable ones, uh, that has been over the past two seasons. And, uh, we don't anticipate it not being operational for this, uh, summer, you. Um, if there's anything that looks as though, uh, that's not going to be, I will make the administration apprise and dust this council. But, uh, as of right now, we don't see any reason why it would not be operational and staffed.
Thank you. And I just wanted to know what were your thoughts on what, what your plans are for the Jackson Zoo?
Hmm, very good question. Uh, the first thought was to get a C-130 and take all the animals from the San Diego Zoo and fly them back. But since that's a federal offense, I can't do that. Um, but in all earnestly, uh, we have already started working with several external entities uh, that will help bring about some fundraising. Um, in addition to, there are state representatives who have reached out and said that they will be, um, assisting, willing to meet with us to have a strategic plan. In fact, um, Council President presented me with a strategic plan uh, several months ago that he himself had presented, uh, several years ago that we're taking a look at. Um, but I really believe that the answer lies in our advertising. If you look at the commercials here in Jackson, you know what's happening in Destin, Florida. You know what's happening in Pensacola, Florida. You know what's happening in Memphis. You know what's happening in New Orleans. That's because those places invest in advertising here in Jackson. Because Jackson encompassing, it touches all of those places. Well, I am looking at a way to find within the budget and to partner with outside, um, entities that we can do more advertising outside of the city of Jackson. Because we're centrally located to where you're not gonna go north, south, east, or west without coming through the city of Jackson. And so we need to present ourselves as this is a destination place to be able to stop and visit our zoo. So it's gonna go back to partnership with state legislators, with external factors that we have now, putting together a vibrant zoo board in which I'm gonna be leaning heavily on Councilwoman Lindsay to help me with that because she was just instrumental in it in the past from what my previous director, Mr. Jones, said. And a robust approach to advertising in terms of getting our name out there and what we have to offer.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, ma'am.
Alright, any, any other questions? Uh, just let me say, one is good to see, uh, Director Harris, former Director Harris here, and then also former Director Jones here. Um, and you know, that, that plan that was given, uh, where Warburner did the architectural plan, and you had several stakeholders, financial partners, uh, that were ready. I, I, I would like to think that they're still willing to help be a part of that. And that's the upgrade and the enhancement to Livingston Park. Because, you know, if, if you can do something like that within that community, uh, I, I think that it will, uh, help revitalize a lot of the things in West Jackson on its own. Uh, with that being said, any other questions to comment? Here another, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Mohammed, did you want to make any other introductions?
I just want to thank everyone again. I thank you for your vote of confidence. And I vow to you to be a man of responsibility and accountability. And I'm just thankful for everybody, for all your love and your support. I just want to give honor and praise and thanks to God again.
Amen.
And I just want to thank the minister for helping, shaping, and fashioning me to become the man that I hope to be, to meet my obligations to my Lord. Thank you, council.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
I want to introduce Minister David Mohammed, uh, that's with us today. Minister David, just raise your hand to the stand. And I would like to open and close the meeting in honor of Mr. Christopher Little, Mrs. Gloria Washington-Greer, Mrs. Del Maimana, Mrs. Orlie Johnson, that's the mother of Judge Fay Peterson, and Mrs. Del Stangler Andrews.
Alright, thank you. Put that under announcements. Alright, thank you. Alright, item eighteen. I'm gonna do it. Hold on, hold on. Let, let, let's do this. Real, real quick before you come, Trey. If, is, is Chloe Director Dotson here? Who? She, she's the hallway? It's my understanding, man, that there wants to be an introduction, come on, of a new division. I, I, I didn't know if we were waiting on her to come in or what, but yes, alright.
Good morning, City Councilman, Honorable Mayor Lumumba. Happy New Year for all of you here.
Hold, hold, hold one second. Just let, let the commotion kind of. This, this goes under introductions. Under introductions. We're here.
Can I do eighteen?
Yeah, we're finna do eighteen next, but they requested, um, and I was looking for.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Robbie Sparkman-Smith, and I am the Manager of Neighborhood Services Division. This is a new division that was developed last year. I was brought in to build that division so that we could be the liaison between the neighborhood associations and the city of Jackson. We will address all the issues that your neighborhood, your neighborhoods may face. And we do have resources that we want to help them, um, apply for and make them available, the opportunities available to them. We, um, we fully launched in November, November thirteenth, this division was launched. We have four programmatic areas that we deal with. It's our target investment neighborhood, um, areas where we have each one in seven, of each of the seven wards. So each of the councilmen have one of those target investment neighborhoods. It's a small area that we are putting our resources in. We work with, um, code services. We work with all of the, all of the divisions in our department and the planning department. Our director is Ms. Chloe Dotson, as you see her back there. And we work with law enforcement. We will be working with, uh, Parks and Rec, all of the divisions to bring it all together because we want the neighborhoods to have holistic, um, we want to approach their, their thriving with a holistic approach. As, um, others were speaking earlier about the curfew and the things that need to be done, our, our division has, uh, things attached to it, different features attached to it that's gonna help these neighborhoods to look within themselves and to, to thrive and to grow from a perspective that they, what their vision is. We have, um, in our division, we have three staff members, full-time staff members. We have Ms. Jennifer West, which all are familiar with her from, um, the neighborhoods. She's, um, Association Neighborhood, um, president as well. We have Leba Masigo. She's Officer. Also work with GIS to make sure that we have the maps and resources that all of our neighborhoods will need. They will, um, have to achieve a certain designation, a healthy designation. And when I think about a healthy neighborhood, I think about a healthy body. What does it take for my body to be healthy? Everything to be working and in order. And that's what we want the neighborhoods to do, to be healthy and in order, to know about their neighborhoods, ins and outs, and to have resources there in place that they will be able to sustain themselves. So when we're finished working with them, we've done the planning, they've done the mapping, they're gonna be whole. They're gonna be ready to do what they need to do to be strong. So right now, um, if, each of you should have one of these folders with the information that we want to do. We wanted to, we want to just put out there for all of you alls with your, um, neighborhoods. We want you all to encourage your neighborhoods and your wards to, to register online with our Open Gov, um, portal. It's important that we get all of them registered because when the funding is, um, out there. It's important that we get all of them registered because when the funding is, um, out there, they will have to have been registered, have to be a registered neighborhood association. Um, we have reached out to some of the, of the tens and had meetings, introductory meetings with them. And we want all of you, all of our, um, councilmen to attend those meetings because we're giving out vital information, we're giving out crime stats, we're giving out income stats, educational stats, and informa, and zoning, because it's very important for them to understand their zoning in order for their neighborhoods to be thriving and to be healthy. Um, so they'll understand what a violation is and what a neighborhood can and cannot do within the city of Jackson. So, with that being said, we wanna work with you. So whatever your situations, your issues that your neighborhoods face, let us, please reach out to us. Our contact information is in those packets that you have. We wanna work with all of the neighborhoods and get them online and get them registered so that they can all apply for funding and whatever assistance that we have available within our division. Thank you so much for this time. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, and let, let the record play. Again, this is under the, an introduction of, uh, item, go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Yes, ma'am, uh, just one, one question before you return to your seat. Uh, uh, last month, I was at the cops meeting. And there weren't representation from anyone with the city. Okay, a cops meetings is where they traditionally have the leaders of the neighborhoods coming there to talk about crime issues and work together with JPT to solve that. But it's a perfect opportunity for you to get your information out. And I was just wondering, do, is it gonna be, uh, one of your policies to, uh, attend the cops meetings and the neighborhood association meetings? Because I was on with my neighborhood association and I didn't notice a presence there either. So, I'm, I'm wondering how are you gonna go about doing that? I know there's a lot across the city, and it's gonna be challenging. But these are important places for folks to meet you.
Absolutely.
And for you to disseminate information.
Um, so I will address that issue. The cops meetings, we typically, uh, attend those meetings, but the month of December was, you know, people were out with holiday things and vacations and stuff, so we were out, we were, everybody was all over the place. But we do resume those, resume those meetings this month. We've always attended those meetings. I think I've seen you at several of the meetings I've gone to. So we, we want to continue that in that vein between the two of us if there's, um, um, uh, dual meetings. Jennifer and I will have to split up, and we've done that in addition times, um, um, before. So we will make sure our presence is felt in all of those meetings, as many of them as we possibly can, anyway.
I appreciate it, and is there an electronic copy of this so we can send out to our...
Sure, we'll make sure that you get that as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Dr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, information that you provided to us and your overview is, uh, very good. Um, what's the difference between what you're trying to do and constituency services? What they are doing?
We actually work with constituent services and, uh, to a certain degree. Constituents, well, I can tell you what we do. We are actually gonna provide sources. We have funding. We will do neighborhood planning for these neighborhoods. That's something that they're not doing because that's not part of their purview. But, um, from a planning perspective, we're gonna do neighborhood mapping, we're gonna do asset mapping, we're gonna provide funding. As I says, with small grants, community partners will come alongside them with the projects that they will do, that they will devise themselves, and we will provide, um, uh, additional resources for them. It could be a match for whatever else they want to do.
What's the maximum of your funding?
I'm so sorry, I said that once.
What's the max of your funding?
Right now, it's at fifteen thousand dollars, um, per, per application.
To be the...
To do a small community project, and the, uh, the projects have to benefit the entire neighborhood. It's not like we're doing a home repair. This is for a neighborhood. They may do a walking trail, they may do, um, uh, tree planting, they may do the front porch, um, unification, something like that, something along those neighborhood parks. Uh, you know, beautifying the neighborhood, restoring a park, you know, some of the parks that are in their neighborhoods or in their areas. So those funds can be used towards that. Of course, we know that we'll need to be additional funding probably, but those are, that's what we're gonna do. That'll help match whatever they get from another source.
Thank you.
Help leverage it, mm-hmm. Any other questions?
No, thank, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And just, just to note, you know, um, the community service part used to actually, Esther Ainsworth, if, uh, those remember, did a lot of building. There's an old neighborhood association map that a lot of us that's been around here for a minute have. And, you know, even when it came to some of the funding, when we used to get funding for cops, uh, that was then, um, which, community or constituent service, which still is by ordinance, became a department. Uh, uh, and it's, it's no longer, you know, functioning as a department, but, uh, I'm, I'm very thankful for this because, um, cities like Houston has been able to implement a super neighborhood auto and be able to create more of things to actually engage our communities, and this just kinda puts it where it needs to be.
Absolutely.
Uh, and just thank you so much. All right, so thank you for the announcement. Let's go to item eighteen.
Resolution finding and determining that the resolution adopted on November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three was duly published as required by law, then no sufficient protest described in said resolution has been filed by the qualified electors in authorizing the issuance of said bonds and/or bond and/or loan.
Second. It's been moving property second on this item. Uh, Mr. Trey Harrison.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, mayor, happy new year. Um, as you know, the, this council approved an intent resolution that was published in the Clarion Ledger and the Mississippi Link on, uh, December seventh, December fourteenth, December twenty-first, and December twenty-eighth. Um, this, uh, resolution that is before you is called a no protest resolution, essentially certifying that it was published and that, um, the, uh, the public had an opportunity to object. Um, there is a slight tweak to the document because we initially thought the council was gonna meet January second, but this meeting is today, January third. So, Ms. Jordan was so kind to come with me to the council chambers on yesterday where we sat and made sure there were no objections, and then checked again with the clerk, or with the city clerk's office. So, uh, we'd asked for your consideration of this no protest resolution, uh, in connection with the issuance of, of the bonds. These bonds are not GO bonds. They would only securitize the modernization funds. And the, the projects are enumerated in the, the block print in the resolution.
All right, uh, question, uh, is there supposed to be an amendment, um, setting Betty Mallett, is that in here?
That's not in here specifically, so what, what happens next is we will come back with a full-throated bond resolution. Um, in connection with that bond resolution will be a pr, um, preliminary official statement, a, uh, indenture, and a loan agreement, and it will list, uh, bond counsel, it will list issuer's counsel, it will list at that point in time, hopefully, an underwriter or placement agent. It's not yet been decided whether this transaction will be a public, um, transaction, uh, to take place in the public market, publicly traded, or private placement. It's forty million. Generally, we see deals of that nature publicly offered with an offering document similar to your twenty-twenty transaction. Um, so at that time, all of those parties will be listed. You will have hired a, um, placement agent or an underwriter determining the structure.
All right, thank you so much. Yes, Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes, thank you, um, Mr. Harrison, for all your hard work on this and for being with us today. Just for clarity, um, do we need to make an amendment changing this from the second day of January to the third day, or can that just be, um, done in the minutes?
So the resolution that is before you, it should say this third day of January. And what I did was, there is an exhibit...
Oh, there's an, there's an amended copy?
Yes.
Sorry.
No, no worries.
Thank you. I'm looking at my book.
There's an Exhibit B, which is a certificate that Ms. Jordan signed, and then Ms. Harris attested to that there were no objections. So, I did work with the state bond attorney to make sure we followed the law, uh, with regard to if the meeting didn't take place yesterday and takes place today. So we're, we're covered from a state law standpoint.
So this is, this is, this is in the new stack we got this morning?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, so, yes, thank you. Um, looking at the next to last page, it's gotta be approved by the mayor and the president of the council?
Yes, sir. That's been the general form that we've used, uh, previously for other transactions with the city.
Okay, now refresh our memory what's all included in this bond.
So, this is under the Mississippi Infrastructure Modernization Act, which was passed in twenty-twenty by the legislature. And under that act, Mississippi had not really collected internet sales tax. And in twenty-twenty, they began to do so, and they began to re, remit those funds to not only cities, but to counties. And they did that based on a formula, not necessarily how much internet we used or purchased. Can't really determine it based on that. They did it based on a formula two ways. A, demographics of the city in terms of population, and B, how much sales tax that particular city is getting already. So with respect to the city of Jackson, let me just pull it up really quickly here.
Is that right? I want to get to the meat of what's gonna be included, streets being paid.
Oh, yes, sir, so...
That's the meat of it.
Just for, for clarity, if you could, uh, remind Councilman Stokes of the amendment that we made?
Understood.
That I think that's...
That's on getting on record.
Okay, I was about to give you the history.
Yeah.
Um, so, this project is for the repair, maintenance, and our reconstruction of roads, streets, and bridges based on an equal share of the bond proceeds to be evenly distributed to each of the seven wards throughout the city.
Come on, preacher.
Or, as agreed upon by the, by the governing body, less the cost of issuance, storm, water, and drainage improvements based upon an equal share of the bond proceeds to be equally...
Don't go too fast. I wanna make sure it's on the record.
Equally distributed to each of the seven wards throughout the city, or as agreed upon by the governing body, less the cost of issuance is authorized by sections...
I'm gonna vote for this.
Okay.
I'm gonna vote for this.
All right, thank you. Councilman Foot, then.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, my question, Mr. Harrison, is the, if everything goes as, as planned on issuing the bonds, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, when will the funds be available to actually, you know, put, um, shovels in the ground?
If, um, if we're able to come back before this body at its next meeting, um, which is what I'd like to do, I've been working with Mr. Malinbecker to do that, um, we would then adopt a bond resolution and all the operative documents at the Development Bank's first meeting in...
The engineering assessment, uh, across the city. And they're going to present us a proposal at that time. So they're working while we're working in order to get the money. So that when the money gets here, uh, we believe that the plan will be here and we can push forward immediately.
Okay, and my other, uh, question to you is, uh, this is all, uh, uh... Section of by wards, am I correct?
Yeah, so that, that's, that's what I was going to, um, just state for, or just I was gonna state for the record, for clarity. There was an amendment to this ordinance, and in that amendment, what it said was that basically this would, bond money would be appropriated by wards. And if it was gonna be used in any other fashion, it would have to come back to this body.
Right.
Uh, so even though that is the intention of, of, what, what is in the ordinance that was actually passed is, as it was just stated when Councilman Stokes had, um, uh, Mr. Harrison read it back into the record. But I think that, as the mayor has stated, the intention, I know that we all have drainage problems, but I think that we can do this, as we did our previous loan sometime back, uh, where it had to come before the AHOT committee, before those monies were expended. Uh, this will follow somewhat of a similar process. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I had just one follow-up for the mayor. Uh, uh, throughout the document, it me, mentioned the governing body, obviously, the, uh, mayor and city council. So how do you envision prioritizing those issues from the city council into this whole, um, uh, process?
So, uh, my priority will be established by the engineering assessment of our challenge, right? I don't yet know that, and so I don't have an independent prioritization in mind. I know that I, I am aware of communities that have community frequent challenges of flooding, such as Hemingway Circle Community, uh, the Lynch Creek Challenges. I know about, uh...
Presidential Hills.
Presidential Hills. Uh, I, I know about, um, the Queen subdivision. Uh, I, I know about several, um, several individuals and neighborhoods that have suffered at the hands of this. But what I need to know is, if, even in knowing the Queen subdivision, I need an engineer to tell me where that problem initiates, what needs to be done in order to resolve that problem. Uh, and my prioritization will be, uh, created based on what the engineers tell us need to be done in order to solve those challenges.
Okay, and also it's going to involve feedback from those representative of those wards, is that correct? I mean, I'm reading here, uh, about the, uh, you know, the governing bodies, and I'm thinking that the city council is gonna have a way to prioritize, uh, and have, say, into, into those decisions as well, after your engineering studies and so forth.
Yeah, I would imagine, uh, I, I, I don't anticipate any, there not being a part of this process that the engineers get to come before you share their homework and, and you express your knowledge and, and your concerns.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, the stormwater studies that's done by I, IMS, is that, excuse me, is that a city contract they have, county or state?
City, I, I, I can...
Do we hire?
Yes, we, we have engaged them.
Okay, all right, um...
And, and they, understanding that this money is coming, have, are doing their preliminary assessment. It will be a contract coming forward to you after everything is secure, and so they understand the process that we're in and the timeline.
Now, this is only for forty million, right? Now, are we gonna try to do streets and stormwater with this forty million?
It is, that, my anticipation is this will be for stormwater, right? And the reason I say stormwater on this is because, once again... And the reason I say stormwater on this is because once again, we're looking at dedicated lines of funding, right? Our one percent has been more towards streets. There has been a resistance. We know that we are always in a battle with the one percent commission. There's been a resistance, or I won't say a resistance, but it is not as much a a priority to deal with stormwater systems. We know that our federal funding is now allocated for our drinking water system. What we don't, we we know that the third party administrator will likely raise water rates. What we do not have and what we are still responsible for is stormwater systems. And we do not have, we do not have a dedicated line of funding that allows us to comprehensively address these challenges. Now, with this leveraging, the fortunate thing is not only does it give us forty min- uh, million upfront, it does not stop us from having some, uh, amount of paygo that that will still be available each and every year, even after we do this leveraging.
Yes.
And so we can decide, maybe we look at it as a as a mechanism to maintain, uh, what needs to be done. But as Councilman, uh, Hartley mentioned, you know, we got to get the debris, we got to get all these things that have been growing up the last thirty years out of there. And then, you know, look at the operation of of ongoing maintenance and and upkeep of these systems. But we we have to have a shot in the arm, um, in terms of our stormwater system that we have not had in quite some time.
Mayor, if I may, the, um, the modernization tax in 2023, uh, the city of Jackson was able to receive ten million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. Um, that that will fluctuate over time with internet usage based on demographics and sales tax, but that's a a really good barometer. In 2022, when the city was only receiving seventy-five percent, because it was a graduation, in 2020, cities only got twenty-five percent. In 2021, it was fifty, twenty twenty-two, seventy-five, and then in 2023, and thereafter, you get the full amount. So that ten million dollar range is a good barometer. Level debt service on this bond issue is about three point eight million a year. So you're going to have ample coverage to pay the debt service and additional funds to address additional paygo priorities through with with the use tax.
Now, Mr. President, can I? Go ahead. Excuse me, uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you, number one, for putting us on the right page of music, uh, because it was my understanding that this money was gonna be used for streets. And that's what we've been meeting with people in these wards about, because they're complaining about streets and potholes.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's saying they're getting ready to pay streets.
Mr. Stokes, so so let me clarify, uh, because I I think at this time, um, when we went through this, uh, the mayor was was out on business. In order for this to pass, there were some amendments that were made in the order. And, um, could could you just read read it so that here, it doesn't prevent what the desire of the community or what the council wants? And it doesn't prevent what the mayor wants, it just says that we will do it together. But if you could.
If I, before he gets that, can I just make a a clarify? So I I don't know where the impression was created. Uh, as an administration, we've always been consistent that we wanted to use it for stormwater. I do believe that it would be prudent to have language that is inclusive of all of the infrastructure. Because if you don't put that in the bond, and later we determine that this is a priority or something we need to do, or or maybe even, you know, to address this storm issue, it requires some street work. Uh, if you don't put that in the bond, then then it limits your ability to use these funds in that regard. So I don't have any any problem with that language being incorporated. But I do want to let you know what our thinking was and and be upfront with that. And I don't know where the impression may have, uh, been generated that we were looking at streets as a primary usage.
Just just for clarity, if you would.
Sure.
Uh, read that, and then we'll go to you, Councilman Foot, and then hopefully we could call us for a vote.
So the intent resolution that was adopted on the twenty-first of November, twenty-twenty-three reads, "Resolution declaring the intention of the mayor and city council of the city of Jackson, Mississippi to enter into a loan with the Mississippi Development Bank in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed forty million dollars to raise money for the purpose of the repair, maintenance and or reconstruction of roads, streets and bridges based upon an equal bond proceeds to be evenly distributed to each of the seven wards throughout the city, or as agreed upon by the governing body, lest the cost of issuance. B, stormwater and drainage improvements based upon an equal share of the bond proceeds to be evenly distributed to each of the seven wards throughout the city, or as agreed upon by the governing body, lest the cost of issuance is authorized by sections twenty-seven, sixty-seven, thirty-one through twenty-seven, sixty-seven, thirty-five, as amended and supplemented from time to time, and sections thirty-one, twenty-five, one at sec, Mississippi Code annotated nineteen-seventy-two, as amended and supplemented from time to time. C, authorizing the use of the bond proceeds for emergency purposes as agreed upon by the governing body for uses allowed under the act, and funding capitalized interest and a debt service reserve fund if applicable, and paying the cost of issuance for the bonds and directing the publication of a notice of intentions of of such intention and for related purposes."
All right. Uh, Councilman Foot, then, Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. The, um, obviously, the money to fund these bonds is coming from the, um, modernization tax, ten million dollars a year, whatever. Does that mean, uh, so, um, does legally, is there a commitment for a certain percentage or all of the modernization tax money that comes in now to go into an escrow account for these bonds? Uh, is there a certain set amount? What's to keep us from spending the ten million dollars we're getting in modernization tax and plus spend the bond proceeds too?
That's a good question. So past transactions for large cities and small, when I have, when I have securitized these monies, for example, some cities decided to do GOs and use the tax. I've been sort of against that. Why use your GO capacity when you have this revenue? In in transactions where we have pledged these funds, we've only pledged eighty percent and left twenty percent as residual. Jackson is different in that you have ten million dollars. So you have two point six MADS or a coverage, which is which is significant. So what will likely happen when we come back before this body with a full set of documents? We will have worked with, um, municipal advisor, potentially an underwriter investment bank, and determine a structure based based specifically on your question, which gets the city the best rate. So there will likely be a debt service reserve fund, just a a few funds set aside, which strengthens the credit. There may be some some sort of a segregated, you know, trustee, whereas when the city gets these funds, it's it's, uh, modernization funds, having the trustee to hold it, knowing that the city's gonna be using it as pay as you go. But it gives the bondholders comfort that it's with this trustee, they're making debt service payments timely, and they can see on an annual basis cash flows from the modernization tax. So there are things like that that we can build in that, you know, provides comfort to bondholders, but also gives the city the best position to get the best rate, and that drives down the cost of money.
Okay, I mean, I'd feel more comfortable if we had a set percentage that automatically went to the bond service and, uh, debt service for the bonds into an escrow account, so they're, and we wouldn't be caught with, you know, um, in a bind.
And that's the concern to bondholders. They they don't, they want to make sure it's not all spent and that money is there to pay debt service. So in my other transactions, we did build in provisions like that, but we did eighty percent. I think Jackson is in a better position than some of those other cities. But that's that still gave those banks comfort. Truist Bank, Trustmark Bank, um, Simmons Bank out of Little Rock, several banks have bought this this specific paper.
Okay, you should keep us informed on that, you know, what the, you know, what you finally come up with once the bond's reached.
Understood.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, uh. Mr. President, I I heard what's been been read. My concern is, um, I think the MADS vision is different from the council vision. And it's gonna end up becoming a train wreck, because we're meeting with people talking about we're getting ready to pay streets. The mayor is basically saying we're getting ready to do stormwater. Now, I'm not hearing that there's a chance it might be both. What I'm hearing is that we need to get on the same page. It's only forty million, and I know it's a lot of money in general. But when you put engineers and architects and everybody else in there, that's not a lot of projects, number one, to get from A to Z and get them completed. And number two, if the priority is gonna be stormwater, that mean the number of streets gonna be paid is gonna decrease, especially you're seeing equally divided into each ward. And that's the line that was in there. So I I think somewhere down the line, right now would be the best time to let's clarify what this forty million could be used for. How many gonna, how many million gonna be used for paving streets? How many million gonna be used for stormwater? What are we looking at, eighty percent for stormwater? Five percent for streets? We need to know before we vote, so that we don't get called up in a situation where I thought, people say, I thought, we supposed to be getting our streets paid. And then I thought it was, but it's used for stormwater. I think it's better to be on the same page and have everything clarified before we take a vote. Thank you.
Councilman Hart. Yes, uh, and and I agree with Councilman Stokes. And and I thought that the purpose, I mean, I'm reading here in the resolution, the first thing they mentioned was roadways. And I know that, uh, in my ward, yeah, we have flooding issues. We have curbs that hadn't been cleaned. We have drainage canals that hadn't been cleaned. Those are issues, but every day, someone is dodging a pothole. And I'm wondering, you know, th- this is all taxpayers' money. And I think that the the clear and present danger is our roadways for a number of reasons, but it impacts our residents every single day. And I I I'm hoping that, uh, and I agree with, uh, Councilman Stokes, uh, to get my support on it, the on this, I'm looking at, hey, roadways being in there. Because I think the roadways sends so, uh, if we repair the potholes, if we repair the roadway, if we do paving, we can do so much good with that little amount of money. But if we take forty million that we don't already have and say, hey, we're gonna earmark it over here for, um, for stormwater, and I I look, I'm gonna. You're asking for that pothole that keep breaking their car and their tires to be fixed. And I know it's not gonna be a one fix, and I know this is not gonna be the end all, but we have to start addressing these issues right away. And, uh, and so again, the only way I'm going to support this is that there be provisions in there for, um, for our roadways, for our potholes, for the aesthetics on the side of the road, for the curb, for the dirt in the curb, for, um, uh, cleaning up and making sure trees and and vines and stuff's not growing out in the street, for patching up that utility cut that's been there open for the last five to ten years. Those are the things that that that, uh, my folks are just crying for. Important, but there are other folks, that there are people that are saying that that the roadways are a high, high priority right now. Thank you.
Mayor. Yes, uh, so I would say that the way that this resolution is currently drafted, it does permit for both alternatives as we see it. Uh, I do want to caution that before we put percentages, we need understanding. We need to know what the cost is, you know, um, and one, uh, we have a very major roadway, uh, or road, uh, infrastructure, uh, or infrastructure projects that will be coming forward to you in the in the spring, uh, when the paving season starts. Uh, there's already money allocated that will go into neighborhoods in a way that have not gone in the neighborhoods in decades at this point. We've only been addressing major thoroughfares, uh, and so you'll see those projects. And we are able to do that because of the leveraging we did of the one percent. We're able to do that because there's paygo still coming from the one percent. What you have not seen, and what I have to admit that not only this administration, but you know, several administrations before us have not done, is any stormwater repairs, uh, because we have not had a line of funding. And if we go ahead and and tie our own hands, then what we'll see is minimal work going in your wards as opposed to truly addressing the problem, eliminating it, um, and thinking comprehensively. And I think that we really, really, really need to address this stormwater system, because for those people that it endangers, uh, they're not gonna be able to live in our city anymore, you know, uh, and and yes, roads are a priority to me. Our administration has aggressively tackled many, many roads and and will do more and and are looking to be more aggressive in that way. But the people who are being flooded out of their homes, having to restart and do insurance claims, or may not even have the prospect of having insurance because of how many claims they have, they they can't, they simply cannot live in the city anymore. And so, uh, I I I know you know Hemingway Circle, uh, uh, Councilman Hartley.
Yes, I I'm well aware. And 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 I'm also aware of the fact that they complain about that.
Yeah.
Uh, as they turn on to Hemingway Circle, about that big pothole. And that's what I, right now, that's what I'm getting my complaints about.
And we have money for that. We have money for that.
Yeah.
We don't have money for the storm.
Well, okay. Hold on. Listen, this is, um, the the resolution for no protests, uh, which means that we are saying that no one came yesterday between allotted time to protest us moving forward, okay? This will come up again, uh, during the next council meeting. Uh, I will say this and assure colleagues that the amendment that we placed in there is still what is, what is in this document. If we want to narrow the scope more.
Yes.
Then we can have that conversation at the next council meeting. Uh, if even if we want to do similar, Councilwoman Lindsay, to how we did with the loan we received, and have the AHOT committee there anytime before those funds are expended, it comes before the committee, we can do that. Uh, but I I think that this is a worthwhile conversation, and I think that there are points on both sides. I think that we do need to know what our drainage costs and some of that stuff, and then we need to do need to know what some of our key streets cost. But at this time, I'm gonna ask if we go ahead and call for, did you have something?
Mr. President, I was just gonna say pretty much exactly what you said just said, and that is, we don't need to lose sight of what this really is before us today. We're not gonna have any money at all if we can't move forward with this step today. Um, but this is just a a step in the process, and so we'll have lots of opportunities to come back and 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 work through all these very important issues.
Yeah, and and just finishing my point, uh, yeah.
I just wanted.
I got you.
Yeah.
I got you. Anything we adopt, when this final, uh, resolution is is adopted, when he comes back, it doesn't stop a project by project, uh, approval by the council. You'll still, at this, I want you to know that when you approve this money, you're only approving money in the bank. You're not approving projects. It doesn't, it's not a one shot at it, that that you'll never have an opportunity. You'll have the opportunity to review each and every project that comes before you.
All right. All right, so this is on the no protest. Any 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 other conversation? Here none other, all in favor?
No, Mr. President.
Hi.
Oppose? All right, item passes for three. All right. All right, uh, let's go to item number two.
Ordinance amending chapter two, article two, division two of the Jackson Code of Ordinances.
So move.
Second.
It's removing property second on this item. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Court of Counsel, it, where's? Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Stokes, what's your question?
With each of these, uh, items, could we just?
Get a brief?
Yeah, tell what, again, what the. Yeah, tell what, again, what the, uh, and I know she, uh, told us at the last meeting.
Yeah, I
Think it is We can come back to him if
Yeah. If, if we were, for the second mover, um, if we would withdraw the motion in the second, and then the clerk of council come, I, I, I withdraw my motion. Who made the second?
I withdraw my second.
All right, and, and then we'll, we'll come back to it when she gets here so that she can take us through that. All right, um, let's go to colleagues. Item, uh, let me see, items ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. I'm gonna hold those for the moment. It just came to my understanding that even after we, uh, filled out a data security form that was approved, uh, that we filled out on October first, that the, uh, access, uh, has been taken away from our deputy clerks of council. And so until I get some understanding, um, um, on why that happened and how it happened, um, uh, um, that's when I'll be ready to take those up. But, uh, we did fill out a data security form, and their access, meaning those that were moved over, as deputy clerks of council, their access has been restricted. Uh, so we'll take those up, uh, once we get clarification on that. So we'll go to item fifteen.
And if you want clarification, I can maybe provide that.
Okay.
Uh, I believe that the access that was requested, uh, was based on, uh, prior access that was allowed for those that are supervised by the administration. Uh, and that not only were we informed by legal, uh, we've been informed consistently that those that are managed by the council, uh, cannot have, uh, tho- that type of dual, uh
So, so Mayor, we did an A G's opinion, I, I, I shared the request, and it says that, um, that information could not be concealed from the council and up on making the request. And so if, 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 if there is, cause it's the same, they had the same access that I have.
Yeah.
And so if we're restricting them from having the same, or unless you've restricted our access as well, then there, there's definitely some problem, and we'll, we'll hold these items until we get further clarity.
Yeah.
We'll move on to item fifteen.
If, if there is a direct request of information, we're more than willing to submit to that. A portal which gives all information and management is a different scenario.
All right. Okay. Item fifteen.
Order ratifying and authorizing the, the payment of six hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty cents to the Jackson Convention Center for Food and Beverages provided to vendors supporting the City of Jackson's Twenty Twenty-Three Annual Senior Health and Wellness Fair.
So move.
Second.
It's removing property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, Mr. President.
All right, we have six and one abstention. Next item, item sixteen.
Order authorizing payment to Fisher Fire Extinguisher, Extinguisher Service, Inc. to inspect the fire extinguishers for six senior cit- centers under the Department of Human Cultural Services, Senior Si- Services Division in the amount of five hundred and ten dollars.
So move.
Second.
It's removing property second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hear none, another, all in favor? I'm sorry, Councilman Lee? Are you saying aye?
I was gonna ask if, I just was saying aye.
Okay. All in favor?
No, Mr. President.
All right, item carries of six, one op- one no. Next item. Seventeen? Oh, battery went down?
Order, order ratifying and accepting a grant from the Center for Workforce Inclusion, Inc. in the amount of four hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars to support the senior aides program for twelve months and authorizing the mayor to execute the workforce inclusion S C, S E P sponsor agreement and related documents in the contribution of matching non-federal funds in the amount of sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars.
So move.
Second.
It's removing property second on this item. Are there any, uh, any questions or concerns? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously. Uh, item nineteen.
Order requesting approval of future professional services and payments related to receiving professional heating, air conditioning, and plumbing services by Upchurch Services L S C for maintenance and repairs for the City of Jackson Department of Park and Recreation Facility.
So move. Second. It's been moving property second. Any questions or comments?
I told, yes, question?
Yes, sir.
Abraham Mohammed Parks and Rec.
God bless you, Minister. Uh, what's all included in this? Which locations and, and I guess the point I'm trying to get to is Grove Park Golf Course. When can we, if we, when will we see the reopening? And is it up to par in terms of repairs and those kind of things?
I'll start with the latter question, Councilman Stokes. Thanks for the questioning. Um, first of all, no, sir, it's not up to par and up to standard. We just recently experienced another flood in it as well, um, as well as the, some of the copper and electrician, uh, being stole out of it. A lot has to do with the enclosure of the back of that area, you know where it is. It's a one-way in, one-way out type of thing. So we're, I'm actually looking at trying to reimagine that clubhouse actually being located somewhere else. Uh, cause as it stand right now, we're gonna simply have it to be able to walk and play and not necessarily have golf carts there just from a security standpoint. Um, to go to your first question, uh, what this company is gonna be providing, it's gonna be servicing all of our facilities, but mainly focusing on the zoo right now. This is the company that we need to come in to make sure that our equipment that keeps the animals warm as well as cool, depending upon the season that we're in, are operating correctly so that we can get the right inspection pass, um, so that we can, um, inst- uh, input the necessarily heating and cooling elements that are drastically needing right now.
Minister, the, uh, though these are coming out of Vern edition, uh, if they go around Lampton and Maze and you'll see everything, those people in that neighborhood and Shady Oaks, they're not coming and stealing wires and copying all of that. I've stopped riding and parking by, um, by the school, Gene Smith, and looking also. I know exactly what you're saying, it's dark. It's real dark down that street. Uh, we might need to modify our thinking and use the Grove Park Clubhouse. Some kind of way to have golf carts or, you know, and all of that in there. Cause a lot of people in that area, they beginning to feel a, a death hole on not just Grove Park, the golf course, but that community. Closing the school now and, you know, they were saying all the time that there was a plan. And so I, I would hope that, um, if that, if they close Grove Park and hurt, it's gonna hurt the whole Shady Oaks community. We got some bad elements on the other side of that, that train track.
Yes, sir.
If the viaduct is reopened, then all that community live again. When they closed that viaduct, it really killed that community. So the status of that lawsuit is important as to when the viaduct will reopen, but
And that's part of the consideration that we're having, Councilman Stokes, in terms of, as I mentioned, relocating the clubhouse, um, be- because I just don't see where that's gonna be feasible at this point. Um, but that's, that's a, a study that we're gonna undertake and look at more. Uh, spoke with Councilman Brazil about it briefly as well. Uh, this is something that we're gonna really look at along with the homeowner association that are there by President Eric Norwood. And, um, we, we, we're just gonna take an aggressive approach to kind of get that to where it needs to be. But I don't wanna give no illusion that it will be overnight, and I know you're not asking for that. But we're definitely not gonna let that community go by way of the golf course.
Could we explore the possibility of acquiring C M and I if they're not gonna reopen? That would give us the land we need, the barricades we need and everything else. Several years ago, C M and I tried to, to lease some property for a driving range to Grove Park. So maybe now might be the good time, cause it's closed. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? Hear none, another, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item passes unanimously. Next item.
Order, order requesting approval of future professional services from and payment to Alpha Media L S C for radio commercials promoting the following upcoming events, the Dance of the Princess and the Frog, Flipping Out, Tumbling, and the fireworks extravaganza for the Parks and Recreation Department.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's removing property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Could we support the, what, I talked to you offline.
All right, uh,
Requesting approval of future professionals lighting and sound control services from and payment to the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees Local Five Eighty-Nine for stage lighting and sound control services for the Dance of the Princess and the Frog for the Parks and Recreation Department on February third, twenty twenty-four.
So move.
Second.
Second.
It's removing property second on this item. Any other questions or comments? Hear none, another, all in favor?
Aye.
Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Thank you.
Order requesting approval of professional s- security services from and approving payment to Kenneth West for six hours of security services for the Dance of the Princess and the Frog for the Parks and Recreation Department on February third, twenty twenty-four, and approving prof- future professional services, security services to be pru- provided by Kenneth West for the Parks and Recreation Department.
So move.
Second.
It's removing property second on this item. Any questions or comments? Hear none, another, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously. Let's go back, colleagues, to adoption of ordinance, ordinance.
Thank you, Council.
All right, thank you, uh, Dr. Muhammad. Uh, let's get this on the floor.
Ordinance amending Chapter Two, Article Two, Division Two of the Jackson Code of Ordinances.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's removing property second on this, uh, clerk of council, Jordan. Uh, Mr. Stokes was just asking for overview on each one as we go, go through these. So if we could just give the overview on two?
Um, Shanika Jordan, clerk of council, this ordinance changed the, um, agenda deadline from three o'clock on Wednesday to three o'clock on Tuesday to enter the items into notice, proceeding the regular meeting, and it shall be approved no later than twelve noon on Wednesday.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any, any, any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. So it says matters. So I know some items are more important than other items, but discussion matters. Do the, do discussion items have to be, meet this deadline, or can discussion be put on a later date?
Um, before the publish of the agenda for council members, they normally, um, let me know what items that they would like to discuss, but the discussion, um, does not have to go through the approval process.
It don't have to go through notice.
Okay, so in other words, the deadline wouldn't, this the deadline you're setting for Tuesday at three o'clock would, would not apply to discussion items?
Discussion items, no.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any, any other questions or comments on this? All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously. Next item.
Ordinance amending Section Two dash seven-one of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinances.
So move.
Second.
It's moving property second on this item. Clerk of council, if you would, brief overview.
Okay, this ordinance allows public comments to be able to speak during the regular council meeting instead of the citizens' agenda meeting.
All right, um, we forgot to suspend the rules today.
No, you, you were okay. They were all agenda items.
Okay. All right, all right, great, 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 great. All right. Hear none, another, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item passes unanimously. Next item.
Ordinance amending Section Two dash six-two of the Jackson Code of Ordinances.
Second.
It's move property second on this item. Any other questions, uh, clerk of council?
This ordinance changed the citizens' agenda meeting to be held quarterly on the last Thursday of each quarter at six P M. to allow for presentations of proclamations, um, resolutions, um, special recognitions, those sorts of things.
All right, any other questions or comments? Yes. Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes.
The meetings out of City Hall, like at Jackson Street, Ms. has other locations. Is, is that included anywhere where we can have meetings out of City Hall?
We just noticed it.
That's correct. Normally, um, the president, they'll let me know when, or the council can let me know when or what location you guys would like to, um, have an offsite council meeting, and we'll try to work with them, um, with the I T department to make sure everything is set for the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or, uh, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I've known this, Mr. President.
All right, six to one. Uh, item five.
Ordinance amending Section Two dash six-four of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinances for the purpose of reconciling the order of business of the council with Section Two dash seven-one B and Section Two dash seven-one C of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinances.
So move.
Second.
It's removing property second on this item, uh, clerk of council.
Okay, this, the final order, um, it, it only changes the order of business to allow public comments to appear, um, on the section on the agenda for non-related and related items.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hear none, another, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously. Let's go to claims.
Order approving claims appearing at pages one, four, five to inclusive their own on municipal docket of claims in the amount of twelve million.
Point of order, Councilman President Banks.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Item number fourteen should come before claims.
We, I'm pulling item fourteen.
Okay.
All right. All right, seven.
Order approving claims appearing at pages one, four, five to inclusive their own on municipal docket of claims in the amount of twelve million, six hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-six cents for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move.
Second.
Second.
It's removing property second on this, uh, Brazil, you were right. Uh, wanna make an amendment to claims to remove, um, result biz L L C out? Item fourteen, basically removing item fourteen out of claims.
I, I believe that there should have been an emergency item for fountain construction. Is that the one you're talking about?
No, I'm removing an item.
Oh, I, what item are you?
I, I'm removing, I, I, uh, result biz from item fourteen. That's, that's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's removing property second to remove result biz out of claims. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous that is now removed. Now we have claims on the floor as amended. There's another amendment. Go ahead.
Good morning. Fidelis Malinbecker, uh, CFO. Uh, we do have an amendment to the claims docket, and that is to add a payment to fountain construction in the amount of two hundred thirty-three thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-four cents paid out of fund three nine six. And this is for the, uh, payment for application one, Jackson Planetarium renovation.
All right, hold, 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 hold one second. Let me get your clarity. This is back up on the order? Okay. Okay. All right, all right. Thank you. All right, council, you should have, uh, the correspondence, uh, concerning this. Is there a motion and second to add this?
So move.
Second.
All right, it's removing property second. Just wanna let you know that the clerk did have a hand to us that we did pass the order accepting this bid. Um, looks like this summer, uh, so that has been passed. So now we have it on the, uh, on claims as a minute. Any other questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Um, Dr. Are they following minority participation?
On, uh, yeah, do you wanna talk about the minority participation?
Are they practicing the minority participation?
Yes, so we had a, uh, minimal, uh, uh, response to that in the beginning, but we agreed to work with Clovis Office to try to increase it as we move through the project.
Now, when you say minimal, are we spending, what total we're gonna spend? Gonna be fifteen million? What's this total project, fifteen?
It's like fifteen, eight, something like that. Yes, sir.
So minority participation might be in what neighborhood?
I really don't wanna misspeak. I'm not sure about that number. I can get information to you, though.
All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Stokes, until we get a disparity study, we can't really require a percentage.
We can't force.
No, we can't.
But we can't, we can't require.
Yeah. We are seeking.
Okay, that's a good
That's a good That's a good word.
Seeking.
It's a good word. We can only seek. All right, thank you. Yes, sir, Castlefoot.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, my question is, is 15 million, 864, where's that money coming from?
Yeah, so it's a layer of funding. One was the bond that was executed for nine and a half, and also leveraging that to issue new market tax credits. And then there is an assortment of funding, you know, money coming from the county, Heinz County, I think 1.5 million dollars, their private donations, former mayor Candido has been heavily engaged, and so they've been raising that money to come up with, I think so far you had, what, 18?
Almost 20.
Almost 20 million dollars.
If you could, I'd really appreciate if y'all could provide a memo that says where all the funding's from. I think it's, it's good to know that it's a collaborative operation and need to make sure and get credit to all the people who've been out there like Mayor Detto, you know, banging the drum, raising money for this thing.
Twisting arms.
Twisting arms, mud wrestling, whatever, okay?
Yeah, yes, we'll supply that, yeah, we'll supply you that list.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I got another question.
Yes, sir, Castlefoot.
On the Jackson Water, 8 million, 828, is that, it says ARPA 2021. Is this, so this is out of old ARPA money that we've got? Where's, where's this 8 million coming from that we're paying them?
And I don't know if you wanted me to cover the larger claims and then I could come back and talk about that. President Banks, I haven't covered the larger claims, and there's a question on one of the items. Do you want me to?
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead and cover the larger claims.
So the larger claims are, the first is Jackson Water in the amount of 8 million, 828,041 dollars paid out of Fund 391, ARPA 2021. This is a payment as ordered through the stipulated order.
Okay.
The second is Richard's disposal in the amount of 808,035 dollars paid out of Fund 9, landfill sanitation. This is for residential collection for November 2023. Third is Heinz County Board of Supervisors in the amount of 649,283 dollars paid out of Fund 1, general fund. This is for the biannual payment for the Juvenile Justice Center. And the fourth is Metro Jackson Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of 288,635 dollars and 53 cents paid out of Fund 203, Jackson Convention Appropriations, and this is for the Visitors Bureau Transfer of Taxes, December 2023. And that's a report for the four largest claims.
All right, thank you. Let's, so we have the amendment on the floor, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, we have six and one abstention. Thank you for the reading of the larger claims. Any other questions or comments on claims?
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, claims passes five, two. Uh, payroll.
Order approving gross payroll including payroll deduction claims number 297102 and making appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved properly second on payroll. Any questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
Item passes unanimously, this, 70. All right, let's see. Now we're back to 23.
Order authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Jackson and the Southeast Sustainability Directors Network for revitalizing communities through reinvestment and renewal of existing assets.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved properly second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Ms. Dotson, can you bring us up to speed what's all included in this, please?
Absolutely. Chloe Dotson, Director of Planning. So we want to go after a EPA multipurpose assessment grant. The purpose of that grant is to help us revitalize our communities by transforming underutilized spaces into parks, gardens, and other green spaces, just to utilize them. So as we do demos, right, they become brown sites. And so what we want to do is kind of the next step after remediation is to figure out what to do with those spaces. And so in order to apply for that grant, we need some technical assistance, and so we will be partnering, upon approval, we will partner with this entity in order to go after that grant. And so we hope to be able to identify, prioritize brownfield sites, and come up with remediation plans that we can then go after that EPA money in order to do projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I have a question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Castlement.
So you said brownfield sites. That typically means that it's something that's been, you know, abandoned or whatever. Can you give us some suggestions or some possibilities of the brownfield sites?
Yeah, so real quick, the big difference between greenfield sites and brownfield sites is sometimes brownfield sites may require Phase 1 or Phase 2 of environmental site assessment. So it may have chemicals. It could have been a former industrial site, and so that's really the big difference. And people have done a great, big, great, you know, many things with brownfield sites. Typically, you stay away from residential, right, but, but, you know, you can always do green spaces and kind of repurpose it for more of a public space, you know, people friendly.
All right, any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to enter to a grant agreement expending 232,454 dollars in the community development block grant Coronavirus Cares Act funding to prepare, prevent, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic to various microenterprises in the City of Jackson.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved properly second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Could you explain it, Ms. Dotson, what's all included?
Absolutely. So excited to get this grant program out. If remember before, you guys approved a small business relief grant that went out to several businesses within each of your wards. This is a microenterprise grant. Well, we realized that the businesses that are really suffering are your minority businesses or your smaller businesses. So this microenterprise grant provides the same amount, so it's $30,000 maximum, but it's for businesses that have four employees or less. So it's your small moms and pop shop within your low to moderate income areas. And this is the remaining of our CDBG funds, and so I'm very excited to get this program running so we can go ahead and end out that program and move forward.
When will you have a decision as to which businesses will receive the grants, and how long do they have to apply?
Yes, so if this agenda item is approved today, it may take us about a week or so to get the online application up and running. We'll proceed with our marketing, and we'll probably leave it open for about 60 days to make sure that we kind of hit a broad spectrum of businesses. We'll let you guys know so you can send out to your businesses, but we want to provide as much opportunity as possible for folks to apply.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Yes, Castle, all right?
Yes, I just, thank you first of all for providing us with this, and I wanted to ask about you guys taking your show on the road. I think there's a lot of businesses out there call after the fact, after things happen, and so, you know, I'd like to invite you to COPS meetings, or if you want a separate town hall to explain all this to the public, I'd be willing to provide one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item passes unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the optional two-year renewal with Mississippi Yard Barber for landscaping and ground maintenance of the City of Jackson's public transportation facilities.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved properly second on this item. Any questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to submit a proposal to apply for the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation's pioneering ideas exploring the future to build a culture of health, specifically economic development.
So move.
Second. It's been moved properly second on this item. Any comments or questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Have we, would you explain the program first?
Um, yes, so this is a Robert Wood Foundation grant, up to $800,000, and it's really talking about exploring the future to build a culture of health. What I would like to focus on kind of with the administration is food deserts, and so we would apply for a grant in order to develop a plan, our strategy to address food deserts, and/or to see if there's some additional funds to actually implement strategies in order to mitigate food deserts, predominantly in West Jackson and South Jackson.
Castle, all right.
Yeah, what are some of the initiatives you foresee coming out of this program to prevent food deserts, especially in West Jackson?
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't know if it would be to prevent, but, you know, what do you do when you're in a food desert, right? You know, the fact that we, over on, I think it was Northside Drive, that Food Depot?
Yes.
What are some more creative opportunities to mitigate food deserts? Not necessarily prevent, but, you know, what are some co-ops, some more creative solutions to food deserts?
Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions?
I have a comment, Mr. Banks.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Dotson, don't forget Ward 2 is a food desert, so don't just single us out. Remember us.
My mistake.
And I, and then also I'd like to look at maybe some farmer's market type ideas that we could bring into our ward.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Ms. Dotson, are you, do you contact grocery stores or businesses to relocate them into a place like Food Depot where they are gone?
Yes, so our Department of, Division of Economic Development does reach out to businesses. We try to basically broker a deal, you know, we can invest in your infrastructure or your rents or your utilities or your mortgage, your, your rents or your leases in lieu of providing a service. You know, we've been talking with Dollar General Grocery, which is a new kind of brand that Dollar Store or Dollar General is getting into, as well as folks like Aldi's, which is more of the co-op farmer's market. So we do reach out as much as we can. We have a limited amount of funds, but we do try to provide incentives for them to either stay or relocate within the City of Jackson.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with MV Contract Transportation Inc. for the provision of operations and maintenance of the Jackson Public Transportation System, J-Train commenced in January 1, 2024.
So move, second.
All right, it's been moved properly second on this item. Any questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing Department of Public Works to pay professionals association dues, conference dues, and travel-related expenses associated with representing the City of Jackson and its employees as is reasonable and necessary to the performance of the duties of the Department of Public Works.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved properly second on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Uh...
As soon as I will get set here. Welcome to 2024.
Last year's coat and tie, oh, Robert Lee Public Works, last year's coat and tie, this year it's a fancy boot.
And a cane. My question is this, APEWA, the American Public Works Association, are we actively involved in that, and do we follow some of the guidelines and some of the, you know, some of the benchmarks that they set up?
We haven't been like certified with APEWA since, I think you were an employee. You know, right now, we've got a lot of work to do inside the department as a whole before we can even think about looking at certification. I think once we get a lot of our in-house things in order, then we can look at a certification. But we strive to do the best we can with what we have in Public Works.
So are these functions you're going to, is that a part of the APEWA, or are some of them involved with it?
Some of them, but mostly what we're looking at is like a professional, like getting your certification hours, your PE hours, like through ASCE, through SWANA, through AIA, so that our engineer and our architect, and along with our folks who have our trash certifications, can keep their certificates for the year.
Thank you, sir. Be well.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Lee, the, they put up the traffic sign at Coe and Marloth King, but the fire plug is still down, and it's still a gray area, I guess, where the Jackson Water, the city is going to handle fire plugs.
That, as far as maintenance of a knocked over fire plug, that'll be through Jackson Water, and I'll remind Ted about that. I'll text him since we didn't have a meeting this week.
Okay, um, what's the working relationship that we have with Public Works in Jackson Water?
I think as far as, you know, me and Ted, I think we've got a good relationship. You know, if we have issues come up, you know, let them know. If we get things come in, you know, we work with them. They are working on their overall plans, and we've got our plans on our end, so we do have to cooperate, collaborate, and work together on that. But I think as far as, you know, at the down-low level, we got a good working relationship.
In terms of water bills and people that's complaining about high water bills?
That's strictly with Jackson Water. Public Works does not have a dog in the hunt as far as concerns about water bills.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, is, is, is there going to be a Public Works Director?
As of now, this flows through our CAO, but we are continuing the search and the interview of Public Works Directors.
Okay, so is the CAO acting or interim, if he's in the position?
Interim, he, the workflow goes through him. He's maintaining his CAO position. He is not in a interim position or phase, but the workflow goes through him.
So then for the record, right now, we have no Public Works Director?
If that's, yes, that's, that's sufficient.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one, final to the contract of Fordice Construction Company, Inc., authorizing release of retainage publication of notice of completion and commencement of one-year warranty for the Colonial Circle Bridge Project, State Project Number ERBR-2503.
So move. Second.
It's been moved properly second on this item. Any questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, we have six, well, five and one abstention. Next item.
The new fancy fire station.
Do we have, fancy fire, do we have money to demolish the old one yet?
That is a part of the contract.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously, item 35.
Order to override the December 2023 mayor's veto on the ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, restricting the use of take-home city vehicles except those deemed essential according to the ordinance in addition, restricting the use of take-home city vehicles outside of the city limits of Jackson with no exception in the transfer of any vehicle from any department to another without City Council approval on the November 7, 2023 City Council Meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item passes six, zero. All right, we'll go ahead and go to.
Thirty-four?
No, we're, thirty-four, we're handling executive session.
Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and go to item 36.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as it appears that it brought this item to my attention, they're concerned about the condition at Broomfield. She had come earlier, but they're putting the baby to bed, putting the paper out. The issue, Mr. Mayor and Legal, could we research and find out the status of the ownership of Broomfield? I know it used to be an old fire station, but if I remember right, I think we, we ought to sold it or transferred it. And I just want to see if that's paperwork as to the ownership.
Okay, that's all you got?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Want to get ownership?
Yeah, Legal, if you could take on the research of that?
All right, colleagues, I omitted and skipped over item 33. If we could get that on the floor.
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims against the city of Jackson, Mississippi in the matter of James E. Gresham Jr. versus City of Jackson, Mississippi, and John Does 1 through 10 in the Circuit Court of Hines County, Mississippi, First Judicial District, Civil Action Number 22-583.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly, second on this item. This memo, was it emailed?
Yeah, it was emailed. Kiana Henry, Officer, the City Attorney.
Hit, 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 hit the button.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Kiana Henry, Officer, the City Attorney. The City Attorney emailed the memo this morning, but I have a copy for each of you today.
All right.
Thank you.
Go.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If we need to go to executive session?
I think, I think the City Attorney's Office will let us know if it's a question that, so go ahead and proceed.
My question is, since John Does 1 through 10, what, can you explain what, I'm not a lawyer, so, so we can explain why they got 10 different?
I think Kiana's gonna answer that after she answers that.
Okay, that's a simple question and a simple answer. So when a lawsuit is filed, a plaintiff don't know who all they need to sue. So typically, they will put Jane Doe or John Doe 1 through 10, and if through the course of a lawsuit, there are other defendants that need to be added, they can add them.
Okay. So in this case, did they not add anybody?
No, it's just the city of Jackson. We're the only defendant in this case. And also, I want to direct you to the second page, where it says settlement recommendation. The amount that's bolded, that is the settlement amount.
So this is, I haven't had a chance to read this thing, but I didn't have it. He's suing us because he got displaced from his home?
Not, not just that. He incurred property damage and there was also.
I think if we're gonna get into the details, we probably should go to executive session to have that discussion.
Tell us what you can about the situation.
Sure. Give them the basic facts.
Without going to executive session.
Well, really, the only thing that I can say is that it's a sewer-related issue and the plaintiff incurred damages. Anything, yeah, anything more to protect the city's interests, we need to go into executive session.
All right, any, any other questions or comments on this?
Just, just one other question. Do we have other cases like this coming up?
There are other sewer cases, I will say that. And then if you look at the news, there's someone, you know, complaining each day. So I'd rather not say.
But, but there are cases where folks are getting moved out of their homes or have some kind of health effect or so forth with sewage, and it's coming up.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, hear none, another, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries. All right, item 37, update on COVID funds, funds.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm gonna request that we get our city clerk to check the status of the, the money that's, that's, that's unaccounted for, let me see it that way, from Ms. Keisha Sanders and COVID. And let's find out, you know, how do we get our money back? Let's find out why the feds, if it's COVID funds, felt that it was not COVID funds. But let's just get some questions asked and answered, because we got to fight to get our money back. How much it is, we'll know once you check. Now, we do have a contract out there with lawyers and companies. Could we talk to them and find out what's the status of everything? And let's get some memos to council members so everybody be on the same page. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Item 38, 39, we're taking executive session. Item 40, if the clerk would just read it?
Monthly report of privileged taxes as required according to Section 27-17-501 of the Mississippi Code of Annotated of 1972.
Just acknowledgement, colleagues. Did you all receive this book report? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right, all right, that's been acknowledged. All right, colleagues, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Close session.
Close session, thank you, to consider items 34, 38, and 39.
So moved. I'm sorry, you finished?
Go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Employee situations. All right, the council is now out of executive session. No action was taken, but we did have discussion as stated. I will move forward at this point with item number 11. Okay.
Order.
Go ahead.
Order ratifying and authorizing the mayor to procure support and maintenance services from Metric Solutions LLC for the pure storage solution.
So moved. All right, it's been moved improperly, second. I believe that there was a desire for somebody to speak to this. Let me say this, IT controls our ability to have access. One of the reasons why we held this is because I was alerted this morning without a call about our employees being locked out of the system for information. The order that this council or this body passed states the reason for having those clerks. Upon passing it, there were conversations that was had with Mr. Melanbaka and Ms. Sharon Timms that said that that would be no problem as far as access. I filled out, or we filled out a data request form, that data request form has been granted, but to me, it seems like that due to some of the questioning and some of the things that have come up, that there was another decision made to restrict the council from having access. Has that been changed or is that still going, is that still the practice is to restrict the clerks from having information as requested through the data security form?
Miriary, Department of Information Technology. What we do in IT is we make sure that each person has access according to their position. That's what we do.
Okay. Are according to request?
You can, you can make the request. So your clerks has, they have access to the clerk portion of the systems.
All right, so the data form that was approved or filled out on October 1st, has that been denied now?
That form has not been denied. It was approved.
So if the form is approved, why is the access restricted?
The access is not restricted. Your clerks have access according to the clerk's office.
Okay, and so the clerks, by definition of their position, these four that I'm speaking of, do you understand what's in the order as far as their position?
Let me say this.
The order we passed.
So they're, they're no longer operating under the internal audit, correct?
They're no longer, but we put specific, specific language in that order as far as their function. Are you sure that you are familiar with that?
We, we grant access according to the data security form. So whatever is on that form, that's the access they have.
All right. Okay.
There was no mention about internal audit.
It, the internal audit is not, the order, the order that we passed
Mm-hmm.
deals with that particular clerk of council's function. It deals strictly with that particular clerk of council's function.
So you have someone that has special functions within your office?
Yes, yes. It's, it's in the order.
The access which is required by law, the access which says that the mayor manages city employees and the functions of that, and all of the portals or information that requires them to do their job in my management of that, and the council has access to its employees and the things that it needs. Now, if there are specific requests, because what you're saying is, is that the council can compel information, which absolutely you can.
Yeah, we're just talking about the financial information. We, we want the, we, we are, we, as we talked about.
We're trying to get through the back door while we can't get through the front door.
As it was agreed upon by the CFO, as it was agreed upon by the CFO, we're talking about, we have a financial responsibility. We, we should at least have the opportunity to look at and to compare apples to apples when we get claims. That was one of the things that we passed, says that when we receive claims, that we'll be able to look at that and be able to look and generate and be able to see the vendor and all that other kind of stuff. Same access I have in comparison to claims. And so, and remember, we talked about this during budget. We said that as council members, we don't have time to actually log into the system ourselves, and due to that, we were hiring somebody to do that that were clerks. They now cannot do that. I still have that access. They don't. They're doing that on our stead.
Fidelis Melanbaka, CFO. So what was requested before was for the clerks to have the access to the system, right? And also what Legal came back to say is that those employees could not carry out auditing functions as internal auditors, right? When they were switched over, the access that was reactivated was that of internal auditor. What IT has gone in to do, which they're going, they're doing all across the city, is looking at the different accessibility that folks have. Just like earlier today when Ms. Merritt also shared, you know, some questions about access previously with another issue. That's what IT has been doing, is granting access to employees based on their functions. And what IT is looking at is the functions of the clerk. And I don't know what all they have access to, right? But it's the parameters within that.
Yeah, Mr. Melanbaka, we never said in our order anything about auditing. What we did use was the word review. And so the reason, and we said that clear, not to go back and say what we did not say, it's not right, but we said for the purposes, that these clerks will have access for the purpose of reviewing and giving information to council so that we can know what to request and so that we can know what to ask. It seems like there's an attempt to keep the council from getting information necessary so that we can ask the proper questions. Again, this is not, we done away with the auditing function. This is a function of clerks to review on behalf of this body, which is now being restricted. What is in that order is the ability to review.
And, and it's at our direction, specifically mine, okay? But I want to kind of keep the main thing, the main thing, in terms of getting this back on the floor. I would really like for us to hear from Mr. Harper in terms of the emergency or the urgency with regard to items 10 through 14, and where it would lead us, or what it could possibly lead us if we don't renew these.
With, let's say, number 10, that would be our peer, the pure storage. That's the infrastructure that all of our virtual servers live on. It gives us the ability to, we need to renew this because without the valid license, we can't call for support. And it's one of our layers of protection, because we can use it also to restore if needed. We can roll stuff back from the volumes, but that's the infrastructure that all of our servers use for storage. All of the public safety servers, all the servers are virtual. So without the peer, you know, we don't have storage. And we have a 20% reinstatement fee because we lapsed. It was due back in July. And so they're speaking about putting another reinstatement on it because we're behind and behind, but we keep holding them off and telling them we're going to pay, it's going to council. And so we really need the peer. That's what all, we already have. That's what all, we already have it, we just need to renew it. The VMware, the VMware is the software that we use to see all of the infrastructure. To make any changes to any virtual machines, you have to have VMware. Along with that, you have to have a valid license to pull down the firmwares for VMware. That protects us from vulnerabilities. So with software, you have to have the latest firmwares because hackers and crackers, they look for vulnerabilities. These softwares open up ports and whatnot and it's, it's a must to have the latest firmwares to avoid being hit by malicious activity. The Sentinel One is the endpoint protection that will be replacing Sophos. Endpoint protection is your first layer of protection. You need endpoint protection so that we don't go through what Jackson Public School and Hines went through. We have to have valid endpoint. That's like your antivirus on your computers and servers. So we need the Sentinel One because it's our endpoint protection. We need the VMware because that's how we manage all the virtual servers. And we need to renew the peer because that's our storage infrastructure. Peer is a great, you know, great software. The support is great. And I'll say this, peer actually saved our library from burning down because their support is so good. Whenever issues occur, the heat, the air condition went out at EOC, the library. They reach out to us and let us know your hardware is experiencing high temperatures to get it resolved. So we need that, you know? They won't do that and they don't fix anything for us without a valid license. So, yeah. So, yeah. And the major concern, you know, is public safety systems on there. We're using Collage, but the newer public safety servers are still there. Cisco public safety servers still use the peer storage as infrastructure. So we need the peer, definitely.
All right. Thank, thank you. And I, I believe there's also going to be some other needs that, that will come back before. Where, where, where's the administration on the council's requests as far as our staff being able to have access for us to review according to the order?
I would say that we can go, I don't have the order committed to memory. You can, you and I can sit down and talk about where you see access, what do you feel is missing, and we can talk about that and see how we come to some common ground.
All right. You know, one of the things, may I just want to make sure, and this is the heart about it, when we requested it October 1st, there was no problem. Until we start having committee meetings and start asking certain questions, then there's a problem. And so at the end of the day, you know, again, this is simply to ask that the clerk of council be able to review all financial things that we will have to approve on our behalf. Because as council members, even though we have all that access, we don't have the time to do it again. Their job was created for them to review, I'm going to say it again, all financial issues and things that come up to us for approval. Contracts and was all those things that, that's in our purview to approve. If we can't see it and if we don't have ample enough time to review it, we already getting claims on Friday and have a meeting on Tuesday. Remember, the reason for doing this was so that they have the opportunity to review. Even these items, we haven't had the opportunity to review. You just took it away.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider 10 through 14. We can't hold these items hostage because we haven't got night weight.
Point of order, Councilwoman Lee, we are, we already have an item on the floor. We have 11 on the floor.
Call the question.
All right. Any, 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 any other questions or comments? This is 11. I'm, I'll just say, colleagues, I'm not supporting this until we have some type of agreement or understanding without reneging on behalf of the administration.
Reneging, I, administration has a...
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Look, we're just starting into 2024.
Call the question.
Say it again.
I said, we're just starting in 2024 and we can't afford this. You know, people aren't expecting us to do this. They're expecting us to govern. And, and, and I humbly ask, give us what we need in order for us to govern, not what you think we need. And I humbly ask, we go ahead and approve the things that help our government function. This is 2024. Folks, really, they're tired of this, okay? Give us what we need. If we say we want to review and we need access to information within our own government, give us that. Why do we have to barter and bicker about this? Should be simple. Let's get it out of the distrust field and well, one up on each other and all, and let's just get it done. Because at the end of the day, it's too early to be starting this.
With, with, with that spirit, Mr. Hartley, I call for the vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Mr. Hartley? This is 11. I just echo the sentiments again. Give us what we need. We just asked for information to review and it's being restricted. All right, item 12, I mean, item 10.
Which order was read?
Which one did you read, 11 or 10? You read 10? Okay, so item 11.
Order authorizing the mayor to procure Centennial One software and authorizing payment in the amount of $73,334.50.
Some moves.
Second.
Second.
It's been moving properly second on this item. Are there any questions or comments? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item carries 41. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a web service agreement with Nia Tech Technology Solutions LLC for website development, maintenance, and support services for the Department of Information Technology.
Some move. It's been moving properly second on this item. Any questions or comments? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item carries 32. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to procure the VMware support and maintenance for Metric Solutions LLC and authorizing payment in amount of $8,516.90.
Some move. It's been moving properly second on this item. Any questions or comments? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Next item.
Order ratifying the acceptance of IT professional service and ERP implementations from Result Biz LLC and authorizing payment for said services in the amount of $17,680.
Some move. It's been moving properly second on this item. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, let the record reflect that that is a vote of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5, 1. Mr. Hartley was in the back. 5, 1. All right. All right. I believe on 6, on 14?
It was pulled from claims.
Yeah, 14, we need to add it back to claims. So I would need a motion to...
Mr. President, I'm making a reconsider claims.
Yeah. Second. All right, it's been moving properly second that we reconsider claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Abstain? Reconsider claims. All right. So we have a vote 5-0 to reconsider claims. All right. Clerk?
Claims appearing at pages 1, 4, 5, 2 inclusive their own municipal docket of claims in the amount of $12,642,297.46 for making appropriation for the payment thereof.
Some move.
Second.
All right, it's been moving properly second. Colleagues, I believe we have two amendments. We got to do it all over. The first one, fountain construction.
So we have two amendments to the claims docket. The first one is to add, to add a payment to Results Biz in the amount of $17,680.00.
Second. It's been moving properly second on this item. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment after all of the amendments. I want to explain to the council the fountain construction.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All right, we have another amendment?
The second amendment is to add a, a payment to fountain construction.
It's already in there. We removed it. If we were considering claims as is, we removed it. So it's already in there.
Fountain wasn't in there.
No, fountain wasn't in there, but I'm talking about the, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so we just add fountain. But you don't want amended and put the payment on it twice.
Yeah, put it on there twice. So we're reconsidering claims as it was posted, okay? So fountain... When, when, when it was reconsidered, we added fountain.
Correct.
And then we removed Biz, one of these.
14.
14. So, and, and, and then it passed. If we're reconsidering, then reconsider, we reconsider as posted, not as it was amended. So it's in there originally. No, I know, I know, I'm talking about the item that was removed. We, I think we good. We good. Yeah, we're good. All right. All in favor of claim? Yes, we just did. All right. All in favor of claims as amended?
I need to be clear, we put 14 back on?
Aye.
We didn't have to put it back on there. It was already, yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right. Oppose? All right, item passes 4, 1.
Who opposed?
She said I.
Did you oppose, Councilwoman Lee?
I opposed. I voted for it the first time. I did vote for it the first time. You have something? Okay. All right. Anything else to come before this body? Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I'd like to, in, in, to honor in the closing and opening and closing this meeting, the passing of a longtime Jackson citizen, great, great American, Dr. Harold Caver. He was born here in Jackson, 1925, enlisted in the Marines in 1943, served in Guadalcanal Battle of Okinawa in, in China, and finally came back in 1946, got his dentist degree and served the citizens of Jackson as a dentist for a long time and finally passed away on December 19th, 2023, at the age of 98.
Any, any, anything else to come before this body? Again, would take time to say opportunity. I, I just, you know, want to say, I know that this was the first meeting in a year. You know, Mayor, if the council can get what it needs so they can do its job without there being the attempt of, or it being a little as if there's anything to hide, I don't think you got anything to hide. All we did was ask for our people to have information that they can review it on our behalf, and now they can't do it. So that's, that's all we asking for.
I, I hear your requests, Councilman Banks. And I said that I would meet with you. We're gonna, we'll, we'll talk about it. We're gonna, we're going to maintain consistency with state law, but we can talk about, we can talk about that. I, I want to understand your request.
Yeah, again, it's just to review. It's not to audit. It's just to review. Don't, I don't like when people put words in the council's mouth. It's to review. All right. With, with, with that being said, Happy New Year. This meeting is adjourned.